Add potentially a friendly amendment to that motion.
Well, we'll need a, well, sure, we can, we can do this.
Sorry, yeah, or you move the motion first.
Well, what, what are you suggesting?
Well, so I'll motion, I'll move, I'll move that we take the recommended act, what am I saying here? It's my first time in a message.
I've, I've recommended that we would remove the second executive session, item two point two, and welcome to motion to adopt our agenda as amended.
I'd make a motion to adopt our agenda as amended if we are amending to remove two point two. I'd also ask that on the deliberative agenda, that we move item four, I believe, but I would like to make sure of that. I'd like to move item four on our deliberative agenda to follow item seven.
All right, let me just, let me just confirm, yeah, let me just confirm the motion here. So Councilor Newbees has suggested that we amend our agenda by removing item two point two, the executive session on the police chief's report, and that we would amend the agenda by moving item ten point four, resolution, city council commitment to rebuilding and reconciling with the Burlington Police Department, to be, to item ten point seven, such that it would fall after the resolution authorizing the interfund loan for Department of Public Works and before the presentation regarding FY twenty six general fund budget update. Is that correct, Councilor Newbees?
Yes, thank you, Council President.
So we have a motion, we have a second from Counselor Bergman. A motion on our agenda is not debatable, I don't think, City Attorney Brown.
I agree, not debatable.
It's not debatable, correct? So we will go to a vote. An amended agenda requires a two-thirds vote, if I'm not mistaken, though, is that correct, City Attorney Brown? While you look that up, we'll go to a vote.
Got me on my toes already.
Yes, Counselor Carpenter?
May I ask the mover of the motion a question?
It's not debatable. Well, I mean, what's your point of information? Yeah, I think that would go to debate, and the motion is not debatable.
So. Point of order?
Counselor Shannon, point of order.
Thank you, President Travers. The, the audio was not on, and so I didn't actually hear Counselor Newbees's motion. It's, is it to move the police chief's report? I heard where it was moving to, I didn't hear what was moving.
So there's, there's a motion to amend and adopt our agenda as follows. By removing the second executive session from our agenda, the executive session regarding the police chief's report, and to move item ten point four, which is the resolution, city council commitment to rebuilding and reconciling with the Burlington Police Department, to become item ten point seven, which would follow a resolution authorization for interfund loan for Department of Public Works and would precede the last item on our deliberative agenda, presentation regarding FY twenty six general fund budget update. So I would just turn to the City Attorney's Office to confirm whether or not a motion to amend the agenda requires a majority vote or two-thirds.
Two-thirds affirmative vote of the councilors present and voting.
Okay, thank you, City Attorney Brown. So the vote requires two-thirds of those present and voting. I will note Counselor Shannon's attendance online. Is Counselor Litwin on Zoom? And he's trying to, okay, well, Counselor Litwin's not here right now. So we'll proceed to a vote with those present, all in favor of the motion as presented by Counselor Newbees. Please say aye. All opposed? Okay, with Counselor Shannon online, the clerk will please need to call the roll.
Counselor Barlow?
No.
Counselor Bergman?
Yes.
Counselor Broderick?
Yes.
Counselor Carpenter?
No.
Counsel, sorry, Counselor Grant? Counselor Kane?
Yes.
Counselor Litwin?
No.
Counselor McKnight?
No.
Counselor Newbees?
Yes.
Counselor Shannon?
No.
City Council President Travers?
No.
Five ayes, six nays.
So requiring two-thirds of those present and voting, that motion would have required seven votes, with five in the affirmative and six against, the motion does not carry. We still do not have an agenda. So I would turn to any counselor to please make a motion on our agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as amended.
As amended, how?
As you first stated.
Okay, as amended by removing item two point two as our second executive session?
Yes.
All right, is there a second to that motion? Correct. The motion is not debatable, so there's a motion from Counselor McKnight. There was a second from Counselor Bergman. We will go to a vote, all in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. So we now have our agenda as amended, which now takes us to item two point one. And for a motion on item two point one. I'm sorry, there will be public forum at six thirty. It is six, it is six eighteen PM right now. We're now at the second part of our agenda, which is executive session, and on this, I turn to a motion from Counselor Newbees.
Thanks for bearing with me, Council President. I'd move that the council find the premature public knowledge of legal advice and information concerning the details of probable impending litigation to which the city is a party or has a stated interest would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage.
Thank you, Counselor Newbees. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Barlow. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Counselor Newbees, could I turn to you for a motion on motion two?
Yes, based on that finding, I move that the council go into executive session to receive confidential attorney-client communications in pending or probable civil litigation matters.
Thank you, Counselor Newbees. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you, Counselor Bergman. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously, so the council is now in executive session at six nineteen PM. We had originally scheduled this for thirty minutes, both executive sessions combined, but we've canceled that second one. So I'm anticipating this executive session will hopefully take us about fifteen minutes, and we will work to be back at, or around six thirty, five PM. Thank you very much. Folks' patience, our executive session ran a bit longer. We had scheduled public forum for a time certain of six thirty, but it is now six fifty, one PM. And we will go ahead and open public forum at this point in time. Per our standard practice, I will first call on Burlington residents who are here in City Hall. We have twelve Burlington residents who have signed up for public forum here in City Hall. We'll then turn to Burlington residents online. We do not currently have any non-Berlington residents signed up, but if they sign up, we would come back to City Hall to see them. And then if there are any non-Berlington residents signed up online, we will turn to them at that point in time. I will also note that later in our agenda, we have a public hearing dedicated to proposed charter changes to appear on our town meeting day ballot. We have some individuals signed up here in person and online for that public hearing. We will not be calling on you in public forum now. Instead, I'll be putting those papers aside for when we reach the public hearing portion of the agenda. Whether in person or online, individuals will be provided two minutes in public forum. If you're here in person, I ask that you please come here, sit at the table, make sure that the green light on your microphone is on, and please speak directly into the microphone, they can be sensitive. For individuals online, we will unmute you on Zoom, we will put a two-minute timer up there, and we will go from there. As a reminder, to speak in public forum online, you need to have signed up at least an hour in advance. I ask that when folks are participating in public forum, that they please direct their comments to me as the chair and not to any other individuals. We ask that folks please leave individualized attacks or comments out of their public comments. We certainly ask that folks refrain from making any discriminatory harassing statements based on any individual's protected characteristics. We also ask that folks please refrain from being too loud or using obscenities. It's important that we maintain a safe place for those who serve and those in attendance and those tuning in online, and we appreciate your cooperation with that. If at any point someone violates these rules, I'll interrupt that individual to allow them an opportunity to proceed in accordance with these rules. Hopefully, they do. If they don't, we'll reserve the right to end public forum at that point in time. So with that, we will turn to the first individual here in person to speak in public comment, and that is Brett Yates. We will then turn to Alex Melville.
Hi, hi, I'm, I'm here to comment on a proposal from last, from the last council meeting. For the second year in a row, councilors suggested that as a substitute for the, for the apartheid-free communities ballot measure, the city should facilitate a community conversation. I don't think this discussion will actually occur. It seems likelier that the councilors simply felt obliged to offer some theoretical alternative to the actually existing thing that they had shot down. But I urge you to understand that if such an event does happen, it will not take the place of the rejected ballot measure. The purpose of the community conversation presumably would be to help Burlingtonians on opposite sides of the Israel-Palestine question find common ground and continue to live together civilly as neighbors. In other words, its purpose is social. The purpose of the proposed ballot measure was political. It was a political maneuver, and I say that in a positive sense. It was a, it was upsetting to hear our elected councilors of all people cast democratic politics as a violent and divisive force. Personally, I'm not interested in a facilitated conversation. In my view, it's not a good use of scarcity resources. Conversation, conversation takes place all the time organically, and I don't need the city's help to see my political opponents as human beings. I already have a good understanding of the Zionist perspective. There's abundance, there's an abundance of literature on the topic. If Zionists are interested in my perspective, there's an abundance of anti-Zionist literature as well. Our differences on this issue are irreconcilable, and that's okay. Politics is the appropriate process for resolving irreconcilable differences. We don't fight in the streets, we take it to the ballot. That's what we wanted to do, and you wouldn't let us. Zionists and anti-Zionists already know each other's views. What none of us can know without a vote is which position is the majority position. That is important information in a democratic society. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Our next speaker is Alex Melville, who will be followed by Jane Keller.
Hi there. I live in the New North End, and I came here to suggest a small improvement to the neighborhood code amendments that you'll be looking at in March that I think will make it easier to build starter homes in Burlington. Specifically, I ask that you look twice at a restriction in the neighborhood code that limits secondary dwellings to be at least three hundred and fifty square feet and lower that to maybe a hundred and fifty square feet. It's not, I'm not wedded to that number, but some number that's under two hundred square feet, which I'll explain in a bit. And because I think that under two hundred square feet, we can build tiny homes, and that can provide a cost-effective way to build starter homes. So a little background, I'm trying to build a tiny home in my backyard for a family member, and a tiny home is like a manufactured home, but smaller, and it can be on wheels, or it can be on a concrete foundation. So as part of building this, I looked at the neighborhood code because I wanted to see what the regulations restrictions were. And in table seven, sorry, page seven, table four, footnote three, there is a little section that says no secondary dwelling can be under three hundred and fifty square feet. This means that we can't build tiny homes in Burlington. This affects my project, but I'm here now because I think, because I care about making homes more affordable in Burlington. And this seems to me like a very simple, easy, non-competitive change that could be made to make it easier to build starter homes in Burlington. I say starter homes because tiny homes are really cheap. We're looking at one that's under a hundred thousand dollars, which is, thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Jane Keller, who will be followed by Jane McDougal.
Good evening, my name is Jane Keller, and I'm a forty-one-year resident of Bilodeau Parkway, just east of the hospital. I've been participating in neighborhood meetings with the hospital for decades, including the most recent. They responded to many of our concerns, but what they're asking for still will grievously harm our neighborhood. In December, they filed for an expedited CON for planning and demolition of the McClure garage and building a replacement parking structure over the surface lot near the water tower. Over the long term, they plan to build a multi-story office and patient building on the vacated McClure garage land. The drawings given to us, which were not included in your packet tonight, show the Colchester Avenue face of that building encroaching into the buffer zone with a significantly larger footprint than the garage and several stories high. We believe this revised MOU would allow them to create a built canyon wall along Colchester Avenue with significantly increased heights of McClure and Miller looming above and behind them. If you've ever visited any of the hospital neighborhoods of Boston, you know what these canyons look like. They don't look residential. Moving that parking will also significantly impact traffic congestion. McClure garage traffic is hospital staff and empties onto Colchester Avenue. Now that traffic will be added to the already gridlocked producing traffic, emptying via Carrigan Drive, clogging up East Avenue, clogging up the Jug Handle, and clogging up Main Street. They also intend to build a second parking tower next to it on the surface lot, adding nearly nine hundred more spaces for visitors, patients, and new staff. The in and out to this parking garage means many more than nine hundred more vehicles being added to the gridlocked route. Three requests: ensure that the future use of the vacated McClure garage land not encroach onto the buffer, and the MOU height allowances for buildings require stepped height increases, no canyons.
Thank you. Is Jane McDougal still here? Okay. Apologies to Jane for being delayed in public forum. Our next speaker is Romeo Von Herman, to be followed by William Leckie. Actually, William Leckie will be in the public hearing, is that correct? Okay, so Lee Morgan behind Romeo.
Thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, rather. Good afternoon, Mayor, councilors, city staff, fellow Burlingtonians. I'm here to speak of an issue of importance regarding public servant communications with the public. Public servants play a crucial role in addressing the needs of our city, ensuring the services are delivered efficiently while tackling pressing issues. However, when any city staff, especially department head or publicly elected official or appointed official, spend time on political posturing, they do not help the public trust or ensure that resources are directed towards tangible outcomes. Political posturing not only distracts from primary responsibilities of serving our city, but also risks eroding confidence in the insubstitution of democracy. It is vitally equally, equally vital, rather, city government personnel, including city councilors, adhere to strictly established communication protocols, particularly in matters of public significance. Mixing personal opinion with official communication can lead to confusion, misrepresentation, or even miscommunication. Clear and consistent messaging ensures that fellow Burlingtonians receive accurate information and impartial information, enabling us citizens of Burlington make informed decisions and trust the integrity of our city leaders. Thank you.
Thank you, Romeo. Our next speaker is Lee Morgan, who will be followed by David Marr.
Good evening, my name is Lee Morgan, I live in Ward Three. Good evening, Council President Travers. The city council commitment to rebuilding and reconciling with the Burlington Police Department resolution makes one thing abundantly clear. The Democratic Caucus is ignoring rank-and-file officers who have bravely called out the systemic failures that are destroying morale and driving them out. Instead of addressing their concerns, Council Democrats continue to parade around and center the voices of leadership, including sergeants, that our officers have said are part of the problem. Let me say this, last month, two officers saved my life when they responded to a medical emergency. That experience has stayed with me, and it is infuriating to hear how bad their workplace environment is. These people who give everything to protect the community, and yet Council Democrats are completely disregarding their voices, their needs, and their survival in this job. The Burlington Police Officers Association survey is not subtle. Officers pointed directly to leadership failures, favoritism, and a toxic workplace culture as the key issues. They described unsworn employees being treated as less than human. Morale is at rock bottom, and what is the Democratic Caucus focusing on? A staffing cap we are years away from meeting and a commendation form that has existed for years. Let's not forget, one of the Democratic cosponsors of this resolution is the only sitting counselor who voted for the attrition policy. That decision would not have passed without Democratic votes. This measure will pass because Council Democrats have the votes. But let it be known, this resolution is a performative failure, and our officers deserve better. Thank you.
Next speaker is David Marr, who will be followed by Karen Long.
Good evening, my name's Dave Marr, I'm going to speak about criminal justice. As you probably know, our criminal justice system is a mess. We have approximately half the number of police officers that we need. And that is an open invitation to drug dealers and other dangerous criminals. To make things worse, we're lenient to courts routinely letting dangerous criminals back on the street. In Vermont, suspected criminals cannot be jailed until trial, except for crimes like murder. Instead, they must be given conditions of release that will protect the public. But if a criminal suspect violates those conditions of release, then that person can be held without bail until trial. In Vermont, judges rarely do this. At the November twenty-first Public Safety Committee meeting, a presentation on bail and pre-trial detention showed that from April twenty twenty-two through October twenty twenty-four, criminal suspects who violated their conditions of release were held without bail in only one county in all of Vermont, and that was Franklin County. If judges had the common sense to apply this facet of Vermont law more frequently, we wouldn't have people on the streets awaiting trial on twenty charges. People like that would be in jail where they couldn't break into homes, commit burglary, or threaten medical personnel. When we release, when we release dangerous criminals unnecessarily, it just further clogs the courts and burdens our already overburdened police department. Our judges seem to care more about the rights of criminals than those of law-abiding citizens. I urge everyone in this room to do everything they can to turn this around. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Karen Long, to be followed by Todd DeLuca. They're not great on this side either. New chairs.
Okay, so what do I push, the green?
I think you're on.
Oh, I don't do it, okay, great. So I'm Karen Long, and I have something to share. Burlington has recognized for quite some time that our public safety system is in need of transformation. During the previous administration, we had two chiefs dismissed for misconduct on social media. We paid millions in settlements for incidents mishandled. We paid seventy-five thousand for a six-month position, a director of police transformation, that turned out a six-page report and more than half of which was plagiarized. And we have been subjected again and again to the false claim that one political party, the progressives, defunded the police. In fact, our police department was never defunded. In fact, it was, we voted, they, you voted, to reallocate public safety resources. In fact, the vote was bipartisan, nine to three. In fact, funding for public safety has never been cut and is more substantial now than ever. We need clarity and good faith efforts to work together. The Burlington Safety and Security Guide is such a clear and good faith effort. It eliminates any uncertainty about who to call based on the issue. I thank the mayor and all the others involved in developing this guide and orchestrating the three public safety forums. The last forum showed us how the city is working collaboratively with partners, the police, the fire, darn it, a stupid phone, I'm sorry. The police, the fire, the doctors, the court, sorry if I'm forgetting. But basically, it was great, and I really applaud the administration for doing it, and I would like all the councilors to recognize what's been going on.
Thank you.
The positive stuff.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Todd DeLuca, who will be followed by Christopher Aaron Felker.
Hello, Mayor, city councilors, Mr. President. I'm Todd DeLuca from Ward Four. In the, in the fall of twenty twenty-three, conditions had gotten worse in Burlington. I started recording and publishing first responder incidents and homeless encampments to learn and share transparently with the Burlington community. Along the way, I have met many and, and talked to many city employees. This past week, I listened to the city council meetings and read the resolution from June twenty twenty. That resolution called the police racist, singled out a few officers, and then cut police staffing by thirty percent to reduce racism in Burlington. I came here tonight to apologize to the police for the way you were treated. I value your service to the city. You didn't deserve to be treated that way. Burlington is not safe. In the past half-year, I've had a rock thrown at me. I've been chased and threatened on multiple occasions, followed, stalked, and harassed. But many, many people here have worse stories to tell. As panelist Jess Kirby said at the mayor's Public Safety Forum last week, it is worse than ever before. I agree. I hope the city will focus urgently on protecting the people from crime. Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Next speaker is Christopher Aaron Felker, who will be followed by Trey Cook.
Good evening, happy new year to everybody. There are a couple of things on the agenda that I'd like to speak to this evening. By the way, my name is Christopher Aaron Felker, chairman of the Burlington Republican Party. I'd like to begin by talking about impact fees and our housing problem. I think that it's important that as a council, as a city, if we I think that it's important that, as a council, as a city, if we seriously want to tackle our housing crisis, that we should be trying to make building housing as easy and streamlined as possible. And at every occasion, I'm going to bring up that we should be stripping and removing onerous overregulations that overburden developers from creating new entry-level housing in our area. I'd also like to speak on the Agenda Item 10.4. I think that this is a step in the right direction. I appreciate the council moving towards wanting to repair the relationship with the BPD, remove the officer cap so we can begin to rebuild. I think that this is a step in the right direction. I appreciate what others have said before me this evening, and I hope that it resonates with you all. It is getting worse in town, and whether you want to agree that it factually actually is, or if that is a perception, you all need to recognize that the perception of it being worse than it's ever been is going to cripple our downtown businesses and keep people away. Burlington's Church Street and our economy cannot sustain itself on just the goodwill of Burlingtonians alone. We have a responsibility here. Please take this seriously. Thank you very much. I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Trey Cook, and then our last Burlington resident here in City Hall will be Drew DiMar.
Once again, we find ourselves in this chamber wasting time on what has become a recurring spectacle, coddling the fragile egos of Burlington police officers. Tonight's resolution is not just misguided, it's an insult to the people of the city who are looking for real solutions to the challenges we face every day. We're here because Democrats on this council have decided that pandering to the police takes precedence over addressing the urgent needs of our community. Every meeting, we see sensationalist claims about crime, sacred praise for incompetent officers, and constant demands for increased funding, all while Burlington residents go without meaningful investments in housing, healthcare, or substance use treatment. The reality is this: Our time and resources are being wasted praising a department that has proven incapable of even meeting the hiring targets that are already set. The same department that in June traumatized a group of high school students with an unborn shooting. The same department that consistently fails to assist people with stuff as simple as their bikes or cars being stolen. That's the department we're putting on this circus for. Let's be clear: This resolution does nothing to make our community safer. It's a distraction, a way to claim a shallow political victory while avoiding the hard work of addressing the underlying causes of crime and insecurity. The idea that simply praising or even hiring more officers will solve all problems is not only lazy, it's demonstrably false. We are being asked to entertain the absurd notion that this police department is somehow underfunded or unsupported. Over the past several years, this council has repeatedly increased police benefits, raised salaries, and funded recruitment efforts, and yet we're told tonight that it still isn't enough. How much more time, money, and energy will this council waste on a department that can't deliver? Meanwhile, the rest of us are left to wonder: When will Burlington's residents become your priority? When will we stop hearing about what the police need to feel good about themselves and start hearing about how this council plans to address housing insecurity, overdose rates, food insecurity, transportation, and so on?
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Drew DiMar, who will be followed online by Sharon Busher.
Hi, thanks, everybody. My name's Drew DiMar, and I come with an opportunity and a favor to ask. I work for a local nonprofit called PH International, based in the Mad River Valley, and we're having a program, Come to Vermont, of exchange students. They're coming from Myanmar, the Philippines, and a few different countries in the Pacific Islands, and they're coming to learn about environmental sustainability and conflict resolution. During their time here, they're going to be staying with host families, and we're actively recruiting host families. I just thought I would come here and mention that if anybody's interested in hosting students for a week, or two weeks, or a few days, or knows anybody who might be interested, they can find me. I'll be hanging out for a little bit, and I have some flyers if you're willing to put them up at your workplace or somewhere where you think people would see them. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Drew. And if you wanted to provide a copy of the flyer for this table, you're welcome to do that. Yep. All right. We will now turn to online for the rest of public forum. We have three Burlington residents and one non-Berlington resident. The first Burlington resident is Sharon Busher. And Sharon, I'm going to get the timer up here. And you should be able to go ahead, Sharon.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Hi, my name is Sharon Busher, and I am, sorry, I am listening to a timer, sorry. I am wanting to speak to you about one of your work sessions on assessing impact fees. And I feel that the information was very useful that was provided, but it left me not fully feeling I understand what the proposal is. Currently, impact fees get applied to schools and libraries and parks and rec and police and fire. But I learned at my NPA from Megan Moyer that the impact fees for water and wastewater had not been implemented in quite a while. It's been a long time, and I don't know when they dropped off the radar. But this proposal, this work session, talks about bringing those back, but in what is proposed in the chart, it only talks about those impact fees and doesn't really fund the other ones: schools, parks, public safety. So I'm hoping that the work session will reveal what really is going to be imposed on new development, because new development does need public safety, and we do need contributions sometimes for libraries and schools and parks. So once again, I thank you for giving me a chance to speak to that, and I look forward to having some clarity from this after your work session. I think that what people need to realize is that we need housing, we need new development, we need to grow, but that growth, that new growth, needs to pay its way, and there needs to be funds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Cindy Cook, who will be followed by Martha Lang. Our last speaker in public forum is Karen Seda. Karen, I don't see you on our participant list here. If you are online, I see an iPhone raising their hand. We'll try that when we get to it. Cindy, you should be able to go ahead. I'll reset the timer here. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Cook. I live on East Avenue, and I'm speaking about the draft MOU between the City of Burlington and the Medical Center. I've been meeting with the Medical Center along with a lot of neighbors and appreciate their time. I think there are two areas that I hope the council will take a serious look at. One is building height and setbacks, and the potential for the canyon effect that Jean Keller spoke to, not only on Colchester Avenue but on East Avenue. I'm concerned about future parking garages in the current surface parking area looming up to perhaps as high as the Water Tower, which would dramatically affect the nature of the residential area here on East Avenue. So I'd like for you to take a look at that and clarify in the MOU what the building heights and green space restrictions are. Secondly, and perhaps more importantly, is traffic. The current MOU has the city agreeing to a dramatic increase in the number of parking spaces from roughly 2,000 to 3,000 parking spaces. That's a huge increase. We already have gridlock on East Avenue in the afternoons when the hospital folks get out off. I'd really encourage you to strike paragraph 14 of the draft MOU that says that the city agrees to this increase. And also, I'd like to ask you to work with DPW or other folks to get some really meaningful stuff in place in terms of reducing the amount of traffic that the Medical Center produces. I don't know much about demand-side management, but there are a lot of people who do. I'd ask you to take a look at my written comments, which I've submitted to you. Reducing traffic is hugely important and should be a part of the MOU. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cindy. Our next speaker is Martha Lang. Martha, you should be able to unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Martha Lang, and I live in Ward One on Colchester Avenue. I want to speak in strong opposition to the University of Vermont's Medical Center's request to increase building heights and decrease green space. This is an attempt to eventually build an eight-to-10-story building on Colchester Avenue. I laugh because I can't believe they're going to try it. And I strongly urge you to postpone any further discussion until Ward One has both of their councillors sworn in. Right now, we have one councillor. He's trying very hard, and I think it's only fair to Ward One that we have a true representation of our councillors. And I also want to thank all the neighbors for being so helpful. And I sent you a lot of information, and that's all I'm going to say. And thank you very much for working very hard, and I appreciate you trying to postpone this until we have a true representation. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker we have signed up for public forum is Karen Seda. Karen, you raised your hand as the iPhone. Is that you?
There is no other, Mr. President.
All right, so go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to be moving to Burlington because you get a little too happy when you say non-Berlington resident, but don't worry, my cute apartment's on its way. Okay, first and foremost, shout out to all the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta. Happy Founder's Day to my beautiful chocolate diamond queens. Second of all, Houston versus Hill. If you don't know the Supreme Court case, you can ask Jessica Brown. Hey, Jessica. Because free speech is free speech, and this is a queen city, so once again, I'm representing all the queens in Burlington. This town has been suffering for years because they don't want to listen to queens, the women who are telling you that we're suffering, that the city refuses to listen to our safety, they keep listening to masculine women, and they keep wanting to say, "Oh, she's saying masculine women," but you know who knows these women are masculine? The Department of Corrections. That's why they're building these female prisons, because they see what I see, okay? Well, everybody sees, except for the city and people who want to solve problems. But anyhow, once again, I'm just here to speak on the behalf of the women in Burlington who are suffering, who don't want to go outside, so therefore our city will economically suffer when the pretty girls are not going outside, because the men from Montreal, Boston, New York are not going to want to come to Burlington if they're going to encounter these type of women. And women are just going to stay at home, do our beauty treatments at home, and not interact with the city, which is detrimental. Long, oh, only 45, okay. So other thing I want to say, shout out to my God, my Savior, for giving me Melania Trump, for giving us an example of a woman who is playing the game. Ladies, you see how she's a 50-year-old woman playing the long game? Taurus, hot, pretty, a hot First Lady. We deserve this. And also, long, for short-
Thank you very much, Karen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. All right. That brings us now to the end of public forum, so we'll close public forum at 7:25 PM. Again, we will have a public hearing on charter change items, and we have these forms here, so that'll come up momentarily. We'll now turn to item three on our agenda, which is Mayor, General City Affairs. And Mayor, on that item, we will turn to you.
Thank you, Council President Travers. So this evening, I have a few different updates. I want to bring the council and the public's attention to a memo that's posted on this item on Civic Clerk as it relates to the city's cold weather policy and an update that we have done through a lot of deliberation and running what was a necessary two-day shelter in December related to the extreme cold weather that we experienced for two days right before the Christmas holiday. So I want folks to know the state of Vermont has, for years, held an adverse weather program where they turn on emergency shelters, which are only hosted by the City of Rutland and the City of Burlington, the criteria there being negative 20 degrees with or without wind chill, among a few other threshold items. What has changed in recent years, however, especially this year, is that the extreme number of shortages of emergency shelter beds being available, the changes in the GIA Emergency Housing Program, otherwise known as the MELTEL Program, as well as the criteria for which one could apply for the state program, even if it was indicated so by the temperature threshold. What you will find in this memo is the city's attempt to do a little bit better, given the humanitarian and public health emergency for which we're living in right now, where there are hundreds of people unsheltered on the streets of Burlington. And the City of Burlington has been put in this nearly impossible situation to come up with solutions on our own as a city, while we continue to push the state to be a better and stronger partner, update this now out-of-date adverse weather program, as well as fix what is still not a successful solution and policy solution for our homelessness general crisis as a state. The City of Burlington can't alone solve this, but this is our best attempt to put something a bit more reasonable and practical in a public health response for extreme cold weather. You'll see there's criteria in here that would, when forecasted temperatures with wind chill are or below negative 10 degrees for four or more consecutive hours. There's some precipitation elements in here related to heavy snowfall and freezing rain, as well as, of course, safe staffing ratios for us to be able to open up, again, an extreme cold weather shelter here in the City of Burlington. I appreciate the many city staffers and partners in the community, including CBEO, among others, who helped us open that two-day shelter in December. We had 130 different individuals, sorry, there were 50 folks who used that shelter on the first night, 80 on the second night. There is extreme need for this kind of support in our community, and I appreciate the AHS, the Agency of Human Services, reviewing the city's policy late last week to secure that we would be able to get funding through our partners, CBEO, in order to make this as close to cost-neutral as possible for the city. So I wanted to bring people's attention to that matter. It's been mentioned in public forum a couple times. We held our third community safety forum last Thursday. It's recorded by Tao Meeting TV. Thank you for recording all three. They're also posted on the mayor's website, including content slides, questions, and answers. We have those updated on our website now after every forum. This particular forum focused on substance use and the very strong and important work that many community partners have been doing on this issue related to public health, the harm reduction side. We gave a slight update on the overdose prevention center work. We now have a project specialist we've hired in the mayor's office to steward the selection of a service provider, as well as the community engagement process ahead of us, and the legal vetting process ahead of us as we get ready to open, hopefully within the city, an overdose prevention center. We heard from medical professionals working with the Johnson, I'm forgetting it now, but a health center in Johnson focused on substance use disorder. We heard from the treatment courts. Judge Griffin came to speak at length around the success of that particular program, although the treatment court really focuses on high-needs and high-risk individuals in terms of who can actually engage on that level of our criminal justice system. We had our partners at Burlington Police Department, Detective Tremblay, come and speak to our drug enforcement policies that we do and procedures, and speak to the sizable amount of drugs that have been taken off the streets, but then, again, in his words, "the toxics and the poison for which continues to come into our communities," really taking advantage of folks who are in the throes of substance use. It was a really comprehensive presentation. I encouraged folks to take a look at it. We had community dialogue afterward, and I very much appreciated how the community, at least present, came to engage with a real openness to understand the complexities of this. There is no single easy solution to these community safety challenges. That's what we're trying to really convey by breaking down these big topics in sessions bi-monthly, and our next one will be in March on the issues of hate crimes and biases. I think they'll be particularly timely, given what's upcoming with changes in who will be in the White House. I want to give a special thank you to BPD Officer John, and please forgive me for butchering your last name, Meyer Dirix. I'm hoping that is somewhat close to it. I went on my second ride-along a couple weekends ago with Officer John, which I will say for brevity. He was particularly gracious and also represents, I think, the kind of professionalism and an officer who has the analysis and the street knowledge around what is facing our city in terms of the nuance and challenges. He used to work for Howard Street Outreach. We spent three hours on a very weirdly quiet night in the snowfall of Burlington on a Saturday night. Maybe it's good when the mayor goes out because it's very quiet. But I really appreciated his candidness and our ability to really talk about what solutions it will take to rebuild our department in partnership together, where we build relationships, we listen to the rank-and-file, and we come up with solutions together to really rebuild our force and really acknowledge the folks within the rank-and-file who are doing really good work day in and day out, such as Officer John. We are about to release this week, by the end of the week, an RFP to select a firm to support the city in our search for the next chief of police. This is a process. Ingrid Jonas, our senior advisor on community safety, has been stewarding for our office. She's done pre-vetting for a lot of firms to make sure that we find not only a capable firm, but one that- to make sure that we find not only a capable firm, but one that understands that, as the client, being the city of Burlington, we will learn from our prior search processes to make sure we are, making sure that Burlington's level of engagement, our clarity around what we are looking for in our next chief is clear in front of mind, and that we are getting candidates who will understand the complexities of a small city that can merge into really the generalist nature that you need to have as the chief of police of this city with our complexities. I look forward to conversations with all of you. We will engage stakeholders, we will engage the rank and file within the police department to make sure we put our best foot forward in this very important process. I've also been hard at work talking to lots of law enforcement leaders, both current and former, around the state of Vermont, to seek advice and counsel on how the best approach should be, including interim chiefs, if it comes to that, to make sure we can have steadiness at the helm of our BPD, and to really focus internally on supporting our department, both the officers and the professional staff, as we work together again to rebuild this department. We are considering a revamp to our ComStat program, which is a monthly convening that the city of Burlington's been a strong leader within, looking at specifically the opioid crisis, but we've been starting to grapple with, we have a lot of co-existing realities when you look at this from a public health perspective of what's facing Burlington. Many folks who present with substance use related to opioids also have perhaps mental health issue, or perhaps have also secure housing issues, among other issues. And we had a good, robust internal conversation on how do we bring ComStat forward, where there is a heavy public health focus to understand the nuance of it all, and also incorporating a new situation table concept, which comes out of Canada, but it looks at the high users of our system are at high risk. It's, and really, as the Chief of, Chief LaChance, our fire chief, said in this meeting, there's likely about 10 people who are really the highest high users of our first responders and services. And if we started to get strategic and use this model, which is a situation table where you look at a case, and you wrap around services, and you're relentless in supporting and finding that individual, and figuring out how to find solutions, you start to take significant pressure off the system. So amongst these pieces, we're really grappling with making sure that we're pushing forward a better response system to begin to make tangible change here in our city around safety. We are, we had a town hall, it was a very busy week last week coming into January, we had a town hall on our Town Meeting Day money items. And you'll hear more tonight on Fiscal Year 26, an initial overview of our fiscal year that starts July 1st, but the town hall was focused on our three bonds, our GO bond, which is a general obligation bond, and two water-related bonds, our Lake Bond and Water Bond. I really think, I mean, I sit through a lot of public meetings in my life. I do think that this one was particularly concise. We really emphasized plain language so people could cut through the technical jargon and understand the need, the why we need these critical infrastructure supports to support not only our housing goals, to densify and build more housing, but our climate goals, and how we need a thriving city, this is why we've called this BTV Thrives, to be able to invest in the future of our city, that we really are at the critical point where strategic investments are needed for our infrastructure related to public safety, but also to just the ability for our main water plant and our wastewater plants to actually function for us and future us, meaning the future residents and folks we hope to be able to attract to live here in the city and provide more new housing for those individuals. It's online, it's recorded, there's also great interactive material on there, including a survey, which is a precursor to participatory budgeting, which we will get to soon enough. But it's a way for you to engage with the general, sorry, the GO bonds, capital needs, and tell us what your priorities are. There's a whole number of issues which we cover in our capital budget, and we'd like to hear from you about what priorities you have between traffic calming, streets, sidewalks, fire trucks, whatever that might be. And an interactive map goes along with that, for you to zoom in on the projects that are on our massive spreadsheet of needing to be fixed, to learn a little bit more in a transparent and tangible way around what's going on in the city. We have more NPAs to go, so go to your NPA in the next six weeks, then you'll see us. We have a dedicated webpage or two. January 27th, we'll be back here at the council meeting for a final vote to put those questions to voters on March 4th. Also on the 27th, just so you can book your calendar now, will be a very exciting night again, we'll have another work session from the administration on the Modern Gov Initiative, which is our attempt to start looking at rightsizing our city government. I began talking about this last summer, early fall, and we will be starting to look at our first major recommendation around the creation of a Department of Administration. This is my teaser for you to come back on January 27th. It's our attempt to start to make more efficiencies, bring sort of the core elements of our city that are, in my mind, the things that should be continuous regardless of who is mayor or on city council. So come back for more and hear about that concept. We would love to hear your feedback. The legislature began on Wednesday of last week. It was an interesting start to the session, it's a very different-looking legislature this year. We will also hear from the lobbying team representing the city this session on January 27th. Remember, we have five top issues that this council unanimously supported, which include our emergency housing issue, the supporting the charter change item, which we'll bring to the voters in March, which is banning guns in places that serve alcohol. It is having a more workable court system, has the capacity to hold folks accountable, as well as addressing our mental health and substance use needs, and then infrastructure. Again, infrastructure, so that the bonds are not the only solution, that we're getting support from the state on the critical needs for this city. And then finally, I have begun, and I began in December and November, holding stakeholder meetings quarterly, and I began with our youth. This month, I met with faith leaders from all denominations, and I will, in February, March, start to begin to more formally meet with businesses in a quarterly fashion. I already have town halls with business leaders, but I'm also adding city unions who are not representing the city workforce, but unions that represent other employers in the area, as well as BIPOC leaders, to start just hearing and having intentional listening sessions with stakeholder groups on a whole host of issues. And much like I did with the faith community leaders, I start these meetings with saying, how are you experiencing Burlington? How can we be working in partnership? How can we start building relationships so you feel heard, and you also have a city that is here as a willing and engaged partner, and making sure that our city, again, is moving together forward? And that is more than enough, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. That now takes us to item 4 on our agenda, City Council, General City Affairs. Is there any counselor that wishes to speak on this portion of our agenda? Counselor Grant.
Thank you. We had a Public Safety Committee meeting December 19th, and FYI, the next one will be next Thursday, the 23rd. At this meeting, we had a full report from our fire chief, Chief LaChance. His reports are always very interesting and full of a lot of data with regards to the amount of work and the number of incidents that our fire department is dealing with, as well as a look at the overdose crisis from their point of view, as they've been very heavily involved in responding to a lot of those cases. The other item that we had a presentation on and is attached to this agenda item under the city council meeting, is also attached to the December Public Safety Committee meeting, was a report from Director Elise Smith about the CAPE program, which is a crisis advocacy intervention program. And we, the city was finally able to get a new data person, yes, and they worked hard with Director Smith on gathering a lot of data around what our professional positions inside the police department under the CAPE group are working on. And so it's some really interesting details, taking a look at what's been happening in 2024. And then I think that it's definitely well worth our residents looking at to have an understanding of the reach that these particular individuals have, how they work independently, how they work with our police officers, the type of work that they do, the length of time that they spend with individuals, call types, what they can do to be proactive, what is reactive. The CARES program is getting underway and has clinicians hired, and we are hoping to have a presentation from them. And also, this report from Director Smith included some notes about service coordination. So 11 pages of really good data and really good information, and if you wanted to watch the actual presentation, you can go to the city's agenda from the website, and then go to December 19th, the Public Safety Committee meeting, and under Meeting Media, you would be able to watch the meeting in full or just jump to that presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Grant. Counselor Bergman. And then Counselor McKnight.
Thank you. I just can't leave uncommented the fact that the report on the climate this last week indicated that this was the hottest record, the hardest year on record, that we went up a significant amount in the last year from the previous benchmark. And I just want to thank this council and the public for supporting many of the initiatives that we've brought through the TOOC. We have now a benchmarking ordinance, which will start to really set a standard for our thermal energy sector. We are working on transportation, and we heard tonight the importance of transportation demand management as it relates to the hospital. 900 cars is a lot of cars, that's a lot of carbon, and we just have to continue to do that. We are going to need, as the disruptions occur in the state and nationally and internationally, to have a vital local agriculture component of the city. And so the flooding in the interveil, of which I have been a sufferer for as many years as it's been flooding, is an indication of the hard work that we've got to do. So I just wanted to sort of put this all in perspective based on the latest reports that we've gotten. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bergman. Counselor McKnight, and then Counselor Newbezer.
Thank you, President Travers. I also want to talk about some public safety data. This is a little bit different than the type of public safety data we usually talk about. So quick backstory, over the summer, I was contacted by some constituents who were really concerned about high speeds on the streets that are leading out of the traffic circle, so up St. Paul, South Union, and South Willard in particular. I reached out to the helpful folks at the DPW team, and they let me know that coincidentally, they had, well, maybe not coincidentally, they were already aware of the issue, and they had placed a radar tracker on the street, and that soon we would have data. And fun fact about those radar trackers that tell you your speed when you're driving, they also record your speed when you're driving, so that the Department of Public Works can download a spreadsheet of every speed captured on a street at a particular time. So the Department of Public Works shared with me the spreadsheet of speeds captured on South Willard, which has a speed limit of 25 miles per hour, like most of the outer area of the city does. I reviewed the data and saw some shocking numbers. The highest speed that I saw was 82 miles an hour in a 25. There were several, a couple in the 70s, probably about three speeders in the 60s, and a lot in the 40s and 50s. And so I wanted to share that with you all, because I want the public to know that we have this tool, and I also want to thank the Department of Public Works. They are already planning some traffic calming measures on that street, and it's clearly very needed. And so if you are a resident who's concerned about speeds, I urge you to reach out to your counselors and see if we can get some measures put in place. And we are here to help with this issue, and I also want to thank the folks that reach out to me from Ward 6 to take a look at this, because it was a very real problem, and they were not imagining it. And I'm glad they got in touch, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKnight, Counselor Newbezer, and then I do not have any other counselors in the queue.
I just want to flag for folks that this Wednesday is the next meeting of the CDNR Committee of the City Council. I'm very excited, we're going to have two things on the agenda that we're going to focus in on, and then an extra item I'll add at the end, once I finish my brief remarks, that we're also going to be focused on. So first, there is a resolution I'm bringing forward as chair that we discussed as a committee last meeting, that would ask SEDO to put together a report with relevant stakeholders from across city government and the mayor's office to report back to us later in March. What are some pathways that we can essentially double the funding for our Affordable Housing Trust Fund? And part of that requests that any solutions put forward are revenue-neutral on taxpayers, and any solutions put forward or pathways put forward, if they do increase revenue on taxpayers, that they are targeted to the wealthiest residents, businesses, and tourists, so that we are not putting undue burden on working in middle-income families that are already struggling and getting priced out of our city. The second item we will discuss is a resolution that we've been working on for a while, members of all wards NPA, myself as a member of the CDNR Committee, SEDO, the City Attorney's Office, has been working to bring a resolution to this council, and I think we're getting close, that will help clarify the relationship between the city, city government, city agencies, this council, and the NPA structures. I think there's been, I know in Ward 1 frustration over the last number of years, and so we had asked the council to work on this when I was an NPA Steering Committee member, and I'm glad that I have the opportunity to do that. And then hopefully, part of that will be some action steps that SEDO can do to better train and support NPA Steering Committee members across the city. And the final thing, which will be coming at probably the next CDNR meeting, maybe the one following, is a resolution to do with our council rules, talking about ways that we can require each of us at this table to file financial disclosures, and to ensure that our conflict of interest laws are enforced, because we are living in tumultuous times, and we need to be doing everything we can locally to build trust in our democracy and build transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Newbezer. With no other counselors in the queue, we will close City Council, General Affairs.
Excuse me, I had my hand raised.
Okay, Counselor Litwin, go ahead.
Thank you. I just have two quick things, thank you, I know it's hard to see on Zoom over on the side there. I wanted to thank Counselor Grant for attaching the CAIP data presentation, which I took a look at ahead of our meeting today. I guess I would encourage us all to think about what are the next steps with this type of data. So for example, when I look at a lot of the categories, there are things like community outreach, assistance, public, and some other service calls. And really, I'd like us to get to a point where we're taking this data, and we're looking at, how are we evaluating the effectiveness of the services that we're providing to make sure that the very costly investment that Burlington residents and ratepayers are investing in this program are paying off for us over time? This is a relatively new program, so I understand that we're getting it going, but it's now quite well-staffed, and there are thousands of referrals and interactions. And so questions for me that I will have as we go forward in our conversations around public safety are, what are the outcomes of those interactions? How many people are successfully getting into treatment, or into housing, or into programs? How many are taking advantage of those referrals? I see there are quite a few referrals. And so I just encourage us all as a council, and collaboratively with the administration, to start to think about that. And then the second concern I have that's public safety-related is just, I want to remind the council, and particularly the members of the Public Safety Committee, that we passed many months ago now, the Public Safety Hub Resolution. It was my first resolution, and there was quite a bit of back and forth between our two caucuses around some of the details of that resolution, including a pretty extensive list of stakeholder groups and community folks, such as NPAs, Burlington Police, CAPE, so many other providers. And to my knowledge, that has not been significantly agendized, that the Public Safety Committee has not really taken up what the council charged them with and attended to vote, and I remain concerned that at this point, the due date for the report back to the council is two meetings from tonight, on February 10th, I believe. And I think it's at this point impossible to do the- impossible to do the stakeholder outreach that we provided a substantial amount of time for. So we do need to have that conversation about what's next. But I think this is an unfortunate failure by that committee to move forward with what was past.
Councilor Litwin, we're going to move on. Councilor Grant, I understand, I think Councilor Litwin's comments were out of order. I really don't want to use this general affairs to get into a back and forth, but I don't think it was an appropriate update. Do you want the floor, though, Councilor Grant?
I will have an update ready at the next meeting. It was discussed at a, not the December meeting, I believe it's at the November meeting. And I just would like to remind everyone that there was a higher priority stated at the time that the first priority had to be getting access back to the public at the police station. And that is moving forward, but has taken longer than expected with regards to the repairs. And also, we just recently granted the funding for the receptionist position there. So there's more details, but it was discussed at one of our public safety meetings. And I just always encourage all counselors to watch those meetings and review those minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Grant. So that now brings us to the end of City Council General Affairs. Councilor Barlow, are you? That's not City Council General Affairs. That's our next item here?
Yes, that would be right.
Okay. So we'll close out this portion of the agenda. We are running a little bit behind this evening, which is no surprise if you've attended City Council meetings before. And so I know we have many people here for many parts of the agenda, but we particularly have a number of people here for one item on the agenda. And Councilor Barlow, you had mentioned perhaps some interest in suspending our rules to turn to that item now. And I will recognize you, Councilor Barlow.
Thank you, President Travers. I'd like to suspend our rules to take up item 10.1 immediately.
Thank you, Councilor Barlow. There's a second from Councilor Bergman. We'll go to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. So we'll now turn to item 10.1. And Councilor Barlow, I'll turn to you to introduce it. And please feel free to do whatever you'd like with respect to bringing folks here in attendance forward.
Sure. If you guys, I would like to come on up. You can sort of maybe up here ahead of, I guess in front of the table, maybe. Yeah.
Yeah, move it to the side.
Yeah, and... And as I'm, as people are filing in, and before I read the resolution, I want to acknowledge our guests from UVM, including interim president Patty Prelok, members of the National Championship Men's Soccer Team, head coach Rob Dow and athletic director Jeff Shulman, who are with us as well. And I have been lucky enough to have watched many of the UVM men's soccer matches in person this season, including this thrilling semifinal and championship games in North Carolina. It was inspiring how these young men never doubted their potential and always believed they could win a championship, even when others doubted them. Their championship means so much, not only to the university, but to the city and to the state as well. And I'm so happy that we're able to honor and celebrate their accomplishment with a resolution tonight and with a parade on Sunday, January 26. I also want to mention that since this resolution was drafted, drafted the coach, Coach Dow and his staff have been named Coach and Staff of the Year by the United Soccer Coaches Organization. And with that, I will move the following resolution. And I'm going to read this one. So bear with me. In the year 2025, resolved by the City Council of the City of Burlington as follows: That whereas the University of Men's, University of Vermont Men's Soccer Team won the 2024 America East Conference Tournament, earning that team an automatic bid in the 2024 National Collegiate Athletic Association Division One National Tournament; and whereas the NCAA Division One National Tournament is a single-elimination tournament among champions from 22 college conferences and 26 other top college teams in the nation; and whereas UVM defeated Iona University 5-0 in the first round at home and then traveled over 7,000 miles to play away from home during the subsequent rounds of the tournament, where they defeated Hoster University, the seven seed, 2-1 in the second round, defeated San Diego University 1-0 in the third round, defeated University of Pittsburgh, the number-two seed, 2-0 in the quarterfinal round, and defeated University of Denver, number-three seed, 4-3 in penalty kicks during the semifinal round; and finally defeated Marshall University, the 13 seed, 2-1 in the final round to win the NCAA Division One National Tournament; and whereas the UVM Men's Soccer Team was the first team, other than skiing, to win a national championship in the university's history, the first-ever NCAA championship in the America East Conference, and the first unseeded team to win the crown in a non-COVID, full-field NCAA tournament since 2006; and whereas the UVM National Championship win has brought great pride and celebration to UVM, the City of Burlington, and the State of Vermont, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council and Mayor of Burlington applaud the UVM Men's Soccer Team for their historic achievement and congratulate the players, coaches, and staff who represent this outstanding team. And I'm just going to name them quickly here for us. We have, from the team, Lou Littka, Nicholas Hirsag, Nathan Simeone, Mike Bleeker, Cole Richardson, Adrian Schultz-Solano, Connor Thompson, Andrew Miller, Niels Hartmann, Maximilian Kissel, Nick Lockerman, Yenid Bizini, Nash Barlow, David Ishmael, Ethan Zeparowski, Jean-Luc Armalino, Ionis Vassiliou, Marcel Papp, Toby Grant, Carl Daley, Sidney Lethuda, TJ LaCory, Peter Boltman, Ryan Zellaferro, Zach Barrett, Jeremy Sang, Max Murray, and Mitchell Ringman. Also honoring head coach Rob Dow, associate head coach Brad Cole, assistant coach Roy Toomey, goalkeeper coach Brendan Polley, director of operations Mac Walton, athletic trainer Hannah Tremmel, student manager Eric Bissell, student manager Eli Rossi, assistant athletic performance coach Mike Edgerer. We're almost there. Associate director of academic services, Namec Sevlic, assistant athletic director of broadcasting and communications, Nich Hall. And be it further resolved that in celebration and recognition of their historic achievement, the mayor shall, will proclaim, excuse me, January 26, 2025, the UVM Men's Soccer Team D1 National Champions Day.
And so I still need a second on this. Thank you, Councilor Barlow. We have a second from Councilor Bergman. Are there any other counselors? Do you want the floor still, Councilor Barlow?
No, I'm done with the floor, but if others would like...
Okay. Are there any other counselors that wish to be recognized on this item? Yes, Councilor Broerich.
Thank you. So I have two things to say. As a current UVM student, thank you so much. It feels just wonderful to be able to look all my friends who go to much larger schools with much more famous sports programs, to be able to look them in the face and say, my school got a natty in my four years and it will never happen to you. And second, just, the natty runs through Burlington, baby. That's all.
Councilor McKnight?
I just want to thank you all for being such incredible role models to the children in Burlington. I have two kids who attend your summer soccer camp, and they watched every game with just such excitement and pride. And they're 10 and six years old. And I just want you to know that you're inspiring the next generation of soccer stars to be just like you. And it means a lot to have you all in this important role model position. And we're just so thrilled for you. Thank you.
Councilor Shannon?
I just want to let you know how proud we are of you as a city and how proud it makes us as a city to be able to celebrate this because of your accomplishments and to have something so wonderful happening in Burlington. I'm really looking forward to the parade. I hope we get every high school band in the state of Vermont to come down Church Street. But thank you so much for working so hard and for accomplishing this. It's absolutely amazing. Thank you.
Not much more to say. But any, Councilor Carpenter? Yeah.
There really isn't much more to say. And I too want to say how proud I am as a UVM alum from a family of a lot of alums. And I am old enough to remember when we had football and football went away. And everybody said, oh, my God, it's just never going to be the same. What's UVM going to do without football? They're going to do soccer. And you're going to do it proudly and really well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Carpenter. Does any other counselor wish to be recognized on this item? All right. I will just note that when you won, we were actually in our last meeting. And it wasn't long after that that we heard quite a bit of commotion out on Church Street. So in the time I've been on the council, we've never had an event like yours, bring people down at Church Street around, I don't know, what was it? 11:30 or so at night? And so thank you for giving us that, too. And we, yeah, we celebrated here. Yeah, thank you. All right. So with no one else in queue, I think we will go to a vote on Councilor Barlow's motion. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Well, that carries unanimously. And again, congratulations to you all on this historic achievement. Well, thank you again, Councilor Barlow, for bringing that forward. And congratulations to you and your family. It does not go unnoticed, one of the last names of the players on that list. And so congratulations to your family.
Almost seems like a conflict of interest.
All right. So thank you for accommodating the suspension of our rules there. And thank you to others in attendance. We'll now get back to our regular agenda, and I appreciate your patience. This now brings us to item 6 on our agenda, which is a work session regarding the impact fee program. And if the presenters on this work session could please come forward here to the table, and we'll get started at that point. Does anyone on the presentation need to be promoted for slides? Ashley? Okay. Keaton, are you able to promote Ashley Parker as a panelist? Thank you. All right. Ashley should be a panelist now and able to share. And are you going to introduce the work session? Or?
Are you going to introduce the work session? Yes.
Okay. So whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Thank you. I was just trying to get presentation up for you. All right. Sorry about that.
No worries.
All right. Well, good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm Ashley Parker. I'm the City's Capital Program Director. I'll take a moment to introduce the team and to orient ourselves. We have a few consultants. I think Megan Moyer, Division Director of Water Resources, is online tonight. So she'll be here to talk more specifically to the water resources portion. But we have here at the table with me tonight, Brian Duffany from EPS, which I don't remember the acronym stands for for that one.
Economic and Planning.
And then we have Jonathan Flayson with RSG. Both of these guys are doing different pieces of the overall study. And Megan had Raftellus working on her piece. I don't believe Dave is with us tonight, but there's Megan.
Yes, I am here. So tonight, we're going to go through some draft recommendations. We've been working on this study for at least a couple of years at this point. I think we were starting this when I started with the city back in 2022. So this has been in the works for a long time. We have been working with all of the city departments, had conversations with the school district. We're really looking at an old study from 1992 and trying to bring us up to date with a revised fee structure. So I think because we have so much detail to get through, I'm just going to kick it over to Brian here. He's going to start us off with our slides.
Thanks, Ashley. Again, Brian Duffany.
Thanks, Ashley. Again, Brian Duffany, I'm a principal with EPS, based in Denver. Our work is in the intersection of land use, real estate, and public policy. And so we apply that, that work to economic and community development, infrastructure financing, and affordable housing. And thank you for the opportunity to be here with you. Yes. So we're, this is just an outline of what we're going to cover. It's just a repeat of what's in your packet. I'm going to start with some definitions on impact fees and the legal background and requirements for using them, synopsis of the current fee program. We're going to talk a little bit about the study process. I, I do want to say this is really technical. It's, there's math and there's law and we're going to do our best to make it explainable. But if you do have detailed questions on that stuff, we're, we're here for that. But we want to focus mainly on kind of the policy, the policy that we're looking for direction from you on. So that we'll, we'll get into the findings and recommendations and have, have, I think, plenty of time for questions. So I'm going to try to move quickly and if I gloss over stuff and need to come back to it, just let me know. So impact fees are fees that are charged on new development to pay for capital costs that are directly related to growth. So they were, they became popular kind of in the 90s, around when you adopted them, as sort of a growth pays its way policy. So you're, you're trying to ensure that new development is carrying its load and you're not burdening existing residents and businesses with the, with the impacts of growth. So impact fees can be spent on capital projects that are needed to serve growth, needed to add capacity to the city to provide services, and, and on projects that are really of citywide benefit, that, in other words, they don't just benefit a single development project. Impact fees cannot be spent on activities like maintenance, operations, or addressing sort of past funding deficiencies in, in, in the city's infrastructure. Again, first adopted in the 1990s by the city, I think it was probably one of the first city, communities in the state to adopt them. And then they are, impact fees rarely, very rarely take care of a community's entire capital funding budget. It's always, they're almost always a supplement to other funding sources. Under the law, the laws, impact fees are a form of, I am not a lawyer, I'm just parroting back what the lawyers, lawyers tell us and what we, what we've read. So impact fees are an exaction. An exaction is a requirement to provide a public benefit in exchange for a building permit or a land use approval. And, and the courts see exactions as a type of a taking, right? So I think it's the Fifth Amendment to the Constitution, thou shall not take private property for public purpose without just compensation. So there's, there's a series of, of Supreme Court cases and really constitutional law around impact fees that we need to work within the bounds of. You have to show essential nexus, is the, is the fee or the exaction directly related to the project, directly related to the development? That's essential nexus. And then rough proportionality, is, is the exaction or the fee, does it scale with the size of the project or with the differences between the land use activities? You know, a retail store generates more traffic, maybe generates more police calls than an, than an office, things like that, you have to take into consideration. There's Vermont state law that has some additional guidance on what, what has to be done locally within Vermont. You have to have a, a capital project list that accompanies the fee study. They also limits communities spending their revenue within six years of collection. And you know, they're, the, the Supreme Court legal framework would supersede Vermont law in terms of exactions. So if you changed Vermont law, you'd still have to, you know, work within the, the major cases on this. So the, you often see impact fees used in communities that are growing fast. You know, there were, it's often more in a suburban or exurban context where, you know, the community's growing, chugging along at a pretty predictable place, adding, having to build new roads, having to build new schools, new fire stations, parks. And, and that, you know, creates pretty clearly defined capital needs that are a little easier to plan for. I think that's in stark contrast to the city of Burlington. And there, you know, there's kind of good and bad here. This, you know, this, this is a mature infill community and the, the good part of that is you can serve, you can serve growth because of your compact development pattern with, you can serve a lot of growth with your existing infrastructure. And, you know, in terms of trying to minimize sprawl, that's generally a, you know, a good thing. But impact fees tend to be less suited for communities like that. There are two types of, this is technical, where there are two types of impact fees that we're talking about. The water and sewer fees use a buy-in fee, which is essentially a fee that new users to the system will pay. So new development is, is paying for the capacity that already exists. So previous investments, previous rate and taxpayers have created a water and wastewater system that has additional capacity and, and the new users are going to buy into it. And those fees are a little more flexible in terms of what they can be spent on, such as major capital maintenance projects. The, the work that John and I did on transportation and the other fee categories are capital expansion fees. And those, those are, those are more limited. They can be used for situations where we're expanding infrastructure needed due to, needed due to growth to create capacity for the city to provide services. This is the, the current fee program today. The, the fees are charged per thousand square foot. Larger homes pay smaller, pay more than smaller homes. Affordable and senior housing are exempt. Looking at 10 years of collection revenue, it's about $350,000 a year, city, citywide. But when you look at it across the individual fee categories, it's more like $30,000 to $80,000 per year for the, for the different departments. In my, my kind of professional opinion, it's not a significant amount of money for doing capital projects. The, the cost of infrastructure, of buildings and equipment is, is high. So you, it, it takes a lot of, it takes a lot of years to amass the fee revenue. You need to do something meaningful. We have some examples of that if we, we need to show. Go ahead. So, yeah, we, we kind of covered this. It's, you know, we, yeah, we're, yeah, thanks, Ashley. Just let me know if, if I need to move on. Yeah. So we did, we've done a lot of work over the last two years, as Ashley, Ashley said. We have redone the nexus calculations for the city. We've calculated what the impact fees could be under a new structure. During that work, we spent a lot of time talking to the different departments, really trying to understand what the capital needs were. And that's when we determined we needed to hit pause because we were not finding a lot of eligible projects that impact the revenue could be spent on. Most of the projects we were identifying were maintenance and replacement and upgrade type projects. For example, energy efficiency upgrades to an existing building, replacing fleet, things like that. And then we, you know, we, we tried to get creative and re-categorize things to see if we could look at it in a way to give the city a little more flexibility to spend the money. And that's when we, you know, really decided that we needed, we needed some input from, from policymakers. I think a good way to frame this is around these three questions. So if, if the city collects impact fees, can you spend them on eligible projects? So is there a nexus between the project you're going to spend it on and new, new development? Do those projects add capacity to provide services or are they more maintenance and replacement? Second one, will we need more, will we need other funding to close the gap? So maybe if impact fees raise 10% to 20% of the money for a project, you have to find the other 80% to 90% of the, of the money through grants, bond financing, general fund, to make up that difference to be able to spend the money. And so can we spend, if we collect the fees, can we spend them on eligible projects within six years? And the last one is a little more qualitative. Can we, you know, is, based on the amount of revenue we expect to collect, is, is it worth supporting a fee program? Because it takes time, staffing, and resources to administer them. Megan, would you like to cover water?
Sure. Thanks. So this is just the process used by Raftellus to calculate the buy-in portion of the impact fee. And I just wanted to highlight that with, if the bonds are put on the ballot and if, before we go for debt issuance, we would also be looking to potentially change or modify the impact fee and bring in the, the capital expansion portion because as we've discussed, we clearly have some capacity expansion pieces of our capital. But this particular piece of the impact fee is really just about the existing infrastructure and how do we go about replacing that. So in order to do that, the methodology is basically to calculate the value of the water fixed assets and the sewer fixed assets. It's not a perfect number, but we do have that information available from our records. And then they look at the, that value and then minus the debt service principle remaining on any of those fixed assets because anybody who's now a rate payer would be paying that as part of their rates. And so you can't double charge them, as I believe Brian covered in an earlier slide. You then take the net fixed asset, less that remaining debt principle, and divided by the capacity that the system currently supports. So in wastewater, we used 80% of our total permitted capacity. Our total permitted capacity is 8.5, 80%, I believe, is 6.8. And in water, our permitted capacity is actually higher, but when we started examining what we would consider the functional capacity of the water treatment plant, which would be the sort of sustained rate that the water plant could handle, that number was about 5 million gallons a day. And using those numbers, we came up with these current buy-in impact fees. The allocation request, so the, the, how somebody would determine how many gallons per day that a particular project would be paying an impact fee on would be based, or as currently proposed, on the Vermont water and wastewater design tables. The other piece I wanted to say is, I think Sharon Busher had referred to the fact that there used to be a sewer impact fee. I believe it was called a system, either a system development charge or a sewer capacity charge. And my understanding is that was about $5.20 per gallon. And I don't know when it was started, but per history, it was eliminated sometime in the mid 90s. And our understanding is it was eliminated because at that time, the city was either increasing or adding planning and zoning fees and trades fees. And somewhere along the line, unfortunately, the wastewater fee was eliminated. And so we're trying to undo that history by bringing this back and making sure that our rate payers, our current rate payers are at least having new projects do this buy-in. Thanks.
A good cheat sheet. So if you want to just stare at this one for a while while I talk, it's a, it's a, it's a really helpful one, I think. I need to move that out of the way. Well, I can make it. I can make it. So the current impact fees are the middle column there. That's what the city currently charges for transportation, multimodal, parks and recs, school, library, police, and fire. In the fee study, we recalculated things and shuffled them around to transportation and multimodal, parks and recs. And we combined all the facilities from the different departments into one. We combined all the fleet into one and then water and sewer. The recommendation from the consultants and staff is to, is to stop collecting those other fee categories and shift what we call the fee stack to transportation, water, and sewer. So if you're, if you're a real estate developer, you use these jargony things, the fee stack, you don't really care how much you're paying or where it's, I mean, you care how much you're paying, you don't really care where it's going in your pro forma. So I'll show you the next, okay, a little visual of this. So the current fees are the light blue bars. This is for residential development. When we re, when we recalculated everything with the city's current capital, the fee hasn't been updated in a long time. So when you take all of the current assets, inflationary cost adjustments, we came out with impact fees ranging from $15,000 to $18,000 for residence, per residential unit. That would be a massive increase. With the proposed shift, we're, we're at about 6,200 to 6,700 per unit with transportation, water, and sewer. And, and our rationale is that the city should keep collecting impact fees, but focus more on essential infrastructure. I guess that's maybe a little bit of a value laden turn, but, term, because it's all essential for quality of life. We, we understand that. But focusing on transportation and water and sewer, those have the best nexus with, with growth and development. They are also the most expensive capital projects. So the idea is to try to shift some of the money, some of the new money to those to free up other funding for other programs. The, the, I think, in my opinion, the, the fee increases would be moderate from about 1,500 to 3,200 bucks per unit over what they are today. And then, you know, I think there's an equity piece of it, too, in the water and sewer buy-in fees where we're, rather than, Megan, if I, if I misspeak, just, just step in, but rather than asking current rate payers to shoulder the burden of capacity, we're asking new users of the system to pay their fair share of that. And next, yep, that's me.
And we really just wanted to give you this next slide to show you where, what we think some of the next steps, where we take these recommendations. There's a whole set of slides at the end of the PowerPoint presentation in your packet that goes through a lot of things that staff has been thinking about internally. Where do we go from here? How do we update the ordinance, our regulations? That, we just kind of wanted to let you know what we're thinking and where we're headed and conversations we can have and we can definitely dive in. But I wanted to leave time for discussion and questions about the overall presentation and recommendations for the studies. So.
We've given you a lot to bite off, so we're happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. I suppose just before turning to the council for any questions, I'm curious, and it's probably a question for you, Ashley, or for the administration, whether or not you have a proposed timeline from your perspective as to when you would expect the council to hopefully take action on some of these items?
The goal for this is really to have these in place for FY '26. So sometime in the next handful of months would be ideal.
Okay. Thank you. Any counselors wish to get on the queue on this item? Counsel Newby's here.
If you have to get back to me, that's fine because it's, I, I'm just curious, Sharon Busher, during public comment, was speaking to sort of why just transportation, water, and sewer impact fees. And I just wonder if, if you could speak to that a little bit? And if you didn't catch the public comment, I could do my best to muddle through what she said.
Paraphrasing, why, why did we choose water, sewer, and transportation to focus on? I'll take a stab and then maybe kick it to John and, or whoever else. We, after looking at the types of capital projects that the city needs to do, again, the impact fees need to be tied to projects that add capacity. And, you know, and those, those categories have, we thought have the best match to using impact fees.
Maybe a clarification. Is there a concern about transportation? Is there a concern about what we chose or is it about the concern that we're missing some?
Yeah, I think it's, the implication was that maybe it's not going far enough and not enough categories are being lumped in.
I think it's more in your shop, Brian, about the other, other capital items that are missing from that.
So why did we exclude the other departments? We went through a detailed process of talking, talking with the department heads on their future capital needs. Maybe pull up the, you know, the facilities one is a good example, right there. So we, we looked, we talked to them and interviewed them about the different types of projects that they expected to need in the next five to 10 years. And we, we found that most of the projects are maintenance and replacement and upgrades of existing facilities. There weren't a lot of new expansion needs that we identified. And so, but transportation and water and sewer, though, do have more capacity type projects in, in their capital needs. So if, this example, I warned you there's math. So in, within facilities, we have a handful of projects here. I, I think Fletcher Library renovation is maybe, maybe the best example. Roughly $25 million project. We've made some allocations that about 19% of that project would be eligible and be funded with impact fees. It would add some capacity. So you could pay for $4.7 million of that project with impact fees, but you still need to find the other 20 million somehow. And we, you know, we understand the, the budget challenges that the city has, a lot of communities in Vermont have right now. And so if you collected the impact fees, would you be able to find that other 20 million to do that project? Parks had a lot, also had a lot of projects that just didn't meet the criteria for impact fees. It was upgrades to, to a lot of existing facilities and parks. I love parks. We all do. The, the exception was Callahan Park. That, that could be a case for using impact fees. But it's just, it's, you know, one, I think it's one, one park and there also could be a question on whether some type of more local financing tool for, for the south end might be more appropriate for that. I think that, that one maybe could still be up for discussion.
If I can add just one, one thing. One of the things we talked about in terms of these recommendations and long-term implementation is we're not closing the book on all of the impact fees forever, but in terms of evaluating, assessing, and updating them in this, at this time, these are the ones that we suggest moving forward. The goal for these impact fees is to reevaluate every five years to see where we're at. Things change in the capital world all the time and our city is going to be changing in the next five years. And so that is the goal of reviewing and assessing more regularly and consistently, which we haven't been doing. So that is something that we need to add to our to-do list.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Bergman and then Counsel Barlow? Did you want to get?
Well, thank you. I've been pushing for this impact fee study for three years since I got elected here. And I was here when we, when we got the, the original one and was the, the advisor in terms of what was eligible. So I totally appreciate the complexity of doing this work. I'm particularly focused on transportation and in particular, transportation demand management. I'm particularly focused on transportation and in particular, transportation demand management and our abilities to very much increase our capacity in that regard. And so I'm really trying to understand what we will get in that area that we are not getting right now, that we cannot get. So part of it is also an explanation of the limits. I know them because I worked, you know, in this, but I think it would be helpful for people to understand what transportation impact fees right now can pay for and what the proposal would be for them. Because I hope that it is dramatically different than the traffic light that we are limited to right now. So if you can do that, and perhaps that will lead to some other conversation. Thanks.
Thank you for the question. Well, so going back, the previous fee is quite antiquated. It was a mid-'90s, I think, design. And I think if I'm correct, it was called a traffic impact fee. Now, as a practitioner, I think of traffic as anything that moves. However, most people, when you talk about traffic, they think of it as a vehicle. And so with that distinction or with that understanding of what is traffic, it has been used by the city to fund infrastructure that moved vehicles. And the city has used it to expand capacity in that way. It has funded traffic lights, it has funded other marginal expansions to the roadway system. Now, the city has taken bold steps the last decade, setting up some bigger goals toward multimodal travel. And when I refer to multimodal travel, that means moving people, not just cars. And with the city's long-term plans identifying significant increases in the share of person trips taken by walking, biking, transit, and moving people by cars, there is a sufficient rational nexus that has been created by the city's plans that say, we have an objective to move people more than just moving cars, and we are going to put our money where our mouth is. And so the multimodal transportation impact fee is the proposal at hand. And the list of projects that are on the screen here are those that were identified as having the highest probability of reaching some construction over the next ten years that would fund additional person miles of capacity. And that means the ability to move people a mile of travel. That's our typical denomination. And so we are looking at upgrading bike lanes, namely protected bike lanes, because that offers a much higher quality of service. And we're also looking at shifting some vehicle capacity into higher, more capacity modes, namely shared-use paths, bike lanes. And so those are acceptable and allowable expenditures because they physically increase the capacity to move more people during the day, during an hour, than a car. And so that's really, so you ask what the big difference is? That is the big difference, is that this is a multimodal. Now, it doesn't exclude a vehicle capacity when we have that opportunity. We have the rail yard project, we have the Champlain Parkway, we have infrastructure that is being planned for that moves all people by all modes. So this plan is multimodal in nature. It'll allow you to have flexibility to fund the movement of people regardless of their mode. So rather than exclusionary, it's open to all. Does that answer the question?
Yeah. I mean, I think of the concern about a nine-hundred-car parking garage for UVM MC that is going to be having a conversation. And I think about, you know, what can we do in this regard that would lessen the, lessen the traffic during the high-peak times that supports a transportation demand management program that they have there that might have satellite-light lots that may help fund the capital needs for GMT or some alternative other means of getting folks who are having to travel a lot. They've got to go from the hospital to other sites on, you know, regularly during the workday. They come from outside the city or from places in the city to go to the hospital, and then they go home or they go to these other sites. So moving people is critically important. And I'm wondering, and that'll just, this will, I'll end here because we could probably talk, I could talk like for days, about that aspect of it, if you could.
Yeah. I unfortunately was not here present for the conversation at hand, but trying to understand the context here is that there is a clear incentive for the developer of the property to reduce the number of vehicle trips being generated by the land use. The fee is being proposed to be charged on the number of vehicle trips being generated by the site. And so there is a clear incentive for them to try to maximize whatever means possible to shift people away from cars because you'd avoid the impact fee. So in that way, it's complementary to the programs that the city is trying to promote with traffic, travel demand management at its core.
Thank you councillor Bergman. councillor Barlow?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation, although it was quite dense. But I read it, and I did have questions about the difference, the difference you're drawing between appropriate parks uses and the school uses that we're proposing to eliminate. And so especially around like Callahan Park, why was that park chosen as an area where there would be this nexus of increased capacity, right, that would be needed? And I guess the reason I'm asking that is because if it's because of like the South End Innovation District and development that's happening there, wouldn't that also put pressure on the local elementary school, Champlain School, and wouldn't you be able to make the argument that they might need additional classroom capacity there? Even if the overall district was projecting a flat enrollment, any development within the city would put pressure on the neighborhood schools there. Thanks.
I'll start with the school piece of that. After talking with the district, we were not able to identify capital projects that met the criteria for impact fees. Now, and that's really the core of our recommendation, to stop collecting the school impact fees, is we just didn't have sufficient justification that we could identify capacity, you know, enrollment's growing, we need more classroom space, we need more facilities. We didn't find that.
Yeah, and I think that's really the crux of that question and that issue. One of the things, again, I mentioned this earlier, it's, we're not closing it off forever as like an option, but as we reevaluate in time these fees and how our city is changing, I think that is always something we can put back on the table. And, you know, if we want to reopen this school impact fee case, this study really was recommending that there's another, there be another study to try to dive more into the school impact fee piece of it, because we didn't have the data to do that job. Parks, do you want to talk about parks a little bit?
The slide, a little bit down.
So this one, the reason why we highlighted this one in particular is out of all of the projects on the capital plan that we have right now, this one is the one that's more, really more directly connected to known growth in the city. It's directly linked to the whole South End Innovation District, which made it prime for this kind of analysis. Other projects on the parks list unfortunately were not meeting the same criteria. I think there was maybe one or two projects on our list from the North Beach Campground that might work, but for the most part, they were not fitting this criteria in the same way.
And I understand that, and I appreciate that, and I understand the argument around it. I just, what I don't understand is why an increase in capacity at the parks because of the South End Innovation District at Callahan Park, why that wouldn't also translate those additional homes there, those additional people there. Why wouldn't that translate to additional classroom capacity in South End schools, you know? And that, I guess that's really the nature of my question. And I'm not asking us to resolve it tonight, I'm just raising it as sort of a, it's just a question I'll continue to have. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Barlow. I do not have any other councillors in the queue. We know that this will be an ongoing discussion. I suppose we're at time, so I don't know that I necessarily want answers here, but I was hoping I could queue up a couple of questions for you all moving forward. Maybe the first that you could actually answer right now is, we focused a bit there on the cost per residential unit, but I'm curious what the recommendations are. If you could speak a bit more specifically with respect to non-residential properties. As we look to the suggestions here, it appears, with the exception of retail commercial, that the proposed impact fees would actually go down for office, industrial, warehouse, institutional uses. And just curious if you could speak a little bit more as to the reasoning behind the decreases there and the increases on residential use.
Yes. Give me a moment to remember. But the, so part of the difference you're seeing in the non-residential fees is basically recalculating the Nexus Study with newer methodology. I mean, the older, nothing wrong with, at the time, there was nothing wrong with the fee study. It was done today, we have more data available to make, you know, to understand the nuances between office and retail and industrial land uses and how much, how many people occupy the space. Those are the main drivers and why those are different. And there's different ways, different techniques that are used now to allocate between residential and non-residential development. So it's a fresher, better, more up-to-date fee calculation that drives those differences.
Okay. For a number of reasons outside of our control, there's nonetheless, I would say, a general sense that remains in this community that with the recent citywide reassessment a few years ago, that there was additional pressures placed on the residential community in terms of property taxes versus non-residential buildings. And I do have some concern that moving forward with a metric that proposes more significant increases to residential properties as compared to non-residential properties may perpetuate that sense in our community, and it may just be something that we have to address and have a concrete answer for moving forward. I suppose just a couple, well, that may be, that may be it for now. Anything further from you?
I could offer a quick comment on that.
Yep.
It's, another fundamental to remember with impact fees is they're only charged on new development. So existing residents, existing businesses do not pay impact fees unless they're creating a big expansion. John, did you have something to add?
And the other legal element of impact fees is that it is fairly allocated to the land uses based on their degree of impact on the system. And so as Brian said, it's updated data. For the traffic side, there's a trip generation rate that is nationally used and accepted. And so the fee is calculated on a per-vehicle trip generated by the land use. And that calculation is a lookup table that any traffic engineer says, all right, you're a restaurant, you're generating X number of vehicles during the, during the day. You're a restaurant, you generate this much. You're a home, you generate this much. So there is no variation by land use. It's charged at the trip level. It's just simply then the intensity of the land use that varies the nature. So there is no non-residential, residential distinction. It's how intense are you impacting the system. And the same thing goes on the water side, is that every land use consumes water at a different rate. So I think it's the messaging more than anything. It's that these are designed to agree on the impact on the system, and so every impact is treated equally and fairly.
Understood and appreciated. I anticipate it's a point that will need to continue to be reaffirmed. I see councillor Carpenter, I just, sorry, I just had one other question that actually just came to mind. So we know in Vermont that we need, the state says, over the course of the next five years, thirty to forty thousand additional housing units to meet our housing shortage here. We also know that that's going to depend on housing developers. We're not meeting that goal with single-detached, single-family residences. We're meeting that goal with large residential developments. And I do believe that Burlington has a big role to play in meeting the state's housing demand. But developers also have choices as to whether or not they're going to build in Burlington or South Burlington. We see a lot of development happening there and in Williston right now, for example. And so before I will be able to move forward with any of these changes, I will need to understand more with respect to how Burlington's impact fees compare to surrounding communities in order to answer that question of choices. And I will also want to learn more about how the increase in fees would impact developments that are currently in the works. And we have a City Place development, for example, where there's hundreds of additional housing units planned there. In the South End, we've had discussions about potential large opportunities there. I understand that another thousand to three thousand dollars per unit may seem moderate when we're talking about a single-family housing unit, but that becomes less than moderate increases when we're talking about hundreds of additional housing units. And I want to be sure that if we move forward with these changes, that it's not serving as an impediment to our meeting, meeting our housing demand. So those are just the comments that I had. But councillor Carpenter, do you want to have a final word on this item?
Thanks. Actually, I had something similar, which is one of the areas of growth we're hoping for is through our new neighborhood housing code, but that'll be at a very micro level. And so I guess my question is, how do those fees in particular impact that kind of development, which will be quite small? And then can fees or be exacted for more micro projects? I mean, if you get a street, a block with five new homes on it, and you need sidewalk replacement or traffic calming, can you use it at kind of that level?
You brought up two different distinctions I might note. Is one on the demand side or the impact level. Every certificate of occupancy will be assessed an impact fee based on its impact on the particular capital items that it is. So on the traffic side, that will be calculated. If you're a multifamily home, an apartment, there is an impact. And so the fee would be assessed on every scale of the development cycle. Then the way you can expend the infrastructure, though, as Ashley mentioned, that every five years, we suggest you revisit the list. Vermont has a state statute requirement that the projects are listed in your capital program. And so there is a transparency that you know what you're funding. So as a developer, you pay the impact fee, you know what you're going to get. So it is incumbent on the city to put those projects on the list and then design the fee around that list. So it's not a, you can't come in at the end of the year and say, is this eligible, is it not? You need to be prepared with some awareness of what you want to spend those impact fees on.
Just one more comment, and I think I do understand that, although my gut is, but maybe I'm totally wrong, is as we open up development under the neighborhood code, it seems like we then should have a list. And we all know sidewalks are a huge issue in the city, you know, and it's almost like we'll need to be prepared. If somebody comes in in the block and says, I want to add five or 10 houses, we would, we might, we want to make sure that block's capital needs are on the list. And that's really the better part of the whole city. So it's just a ask, comment that, you know, if we're going to expand these and particularly on residential units, we need to have that list ready for the time that somebody comes in because it'll be very unpredictable. You know, South End Innovation District is very predictable. You know, what happens on a particular street is not. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Carpenter. I don't have any councillors in the queue. Again, we know that this is the first of likely more presentations and discussions to come. So thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Well, again, with thanks for the patience for our representatives here from the UVM Medical Center and relevant city staff. We'll now turn to our next work session, which is item number seven, a work session regarding the UVM MC land use MOU. As the team comes forward here, I will just note for the record that whenever there's an action item with respect to this MOU, I will be recusing myself due to a professional conflict of interest because there is no action item on this tonight. I will continue to preside over this matter, although will not be making any commentary on it. to preside over this matter, although will not be making any commentary on it. And with that, Director Dillard, are you leading us off here?
Well, I, I'm not running this show, but I will need to, yes, share from my computer, and I see I've been invited to do so.
Yeah, you should be able to share your screen now.
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Karen Vasteen, and I work for the UVM Health Network in the Office of Government and Community Relations. And I am joined here by my colleague, who will introduce himself.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dave Kelty. I am the Vice President for Facilities Planning and Development for the Vermont Health Network.
And behind us, we have two of our colleagues that if they're asked questions, will also say their name for the record. But we have Karen Tyler, who is with our legal team, and we also have Ashley Bond, who directs our property management. So I will get us started. Oh, and we have our PowerPoint up. So again, thank you for hearing from us tonight. And I also, as I'm leading off, just wanted to extend a warm thank you to the many neighbors of Ward One who have given up many hours to meet with us, to understand what's going on, and to participate in these conversations. So we're going to walk you through some of this material that was in the memo, but we wanted to give you the background on the history of the land use MOU and where we are now. So in 1999, former city councilors Chapin Spencer, as well as Sharon Buscher, worked with the neighbors as well as the hospital to advance the original land use MOU. We have had two amendments since 1999. One was in 2006, and one was in 2016. And we note this because this 25-year agreement was so durable that we only needed those two amendments. The intention, of course, is that this is a voluntary agreement. The parameters were really put in place to ensure neighborhood, the neighborhood character to the area adjacent to the hospital. And it's also importantly an expression of our intent for long-term planning. So when you looked at the slides that my colleague Dave will walk you through that are the exhibits, these relate to the MOU and show what we're asking for. We are not here to put forward a specific plan today that would go through a different process. Instead, really what we're looking to do is to open the door to our long-range intention on our campus. And it's also important to note that the MOU does not replace zoning, other ordinances, or public policy, or other public process, or other policy. And it's also important to note that our institution has a rather long planning horizon, and we just want to note that, that this is maybe a little bit different than some of the other partners who might come forward to you with a similar ask. So since 1999, the MOU has defined a longstanding, clear set of expectations with the residential neighbors closest to UVM Medical Center. And so several parameters regarding the campus structures ended up being incorporated into the Comprehensive Development Ordinance, which I'm going to shorten to CDO going forward in this presentation. And that spoke to the density of buildings and the height restrictions on the campus. And our goal is to have a minimal impact on the neighborhood. And please note, the density of the buildings is concentrated to the core of our campus, and that was defined in this original MOU. Also, as way of, by way of background, we have several agreements with the, with the residents, especially those who are living in the East Avenue neighborhood. And this includes things like access to the Sliding Hill, which is heavily used every snowstorm, the community garden access, and then, of course, parking at what we still call the former State Lab Building. At some point, we might call it something else. But we allow neighbors to use that for parking bands. You know, when there's construction along East Avenue, it's an option for neighbors to use, as well as Lake Monster Games, et cetera. And I will share with you that all of the colleagues who are here tonight, we actually refer to the MOU on a regular basis when we are looking at communications with neighbors. It's been incredibly instructive. So, that's you?
Thank you, Karen. Background slide that's presented here, wanted to provide a little bit of context about how we started with this whole endeavor. Really, about four years ago, we went back and took a look at our inpatient bed projections in terms of our current bed demand, and then projected out 15 to 15 years in the future to try to get a handle on what the projected growth would be on inpatient demand. The primary catalyst for that was that the previous planning efforts that were undertaken really relied extensively on the 2010 census. And as we proceeded with the Miller Building, which is another first segment of a plan that was implemented, that building was essentially fully at capacity within just a few weeks. In fact, the goal of the Miller Building project was to be able to reduce our inpatient rooms from semi-private rooms to private rooms. We never were able to fulfill that goal. We're still currently at about 42% to 45% private rooms, where we'd really like to be in a much higher ratio. So it was clear that the census information that we relied on to do those bed projections was woefully inadequate. And that was further borne out in the 2020 census, when new information was brought out that the growth in Vermont, and particularly northwestern Vermont, which was anticipated to, to be reduced over time, actually experienced a very fairly significant increase and further increases out and further years out from that. So we had to go back and take a look at our bed model, try to revise our projections to see where we would end up. So our in, demand was calculated to be 481 inpatient beds. And we're talking about acute care beds here, not bassinets or anything like that, or postpartum units. These are traditional hospital med-surg beds. The projections and the demand modeling that we did forecasted additional 242 beds into the horizon over a 15-year period. Now, whether that is a actual real number or not, it is the best modeling that we were able to put together based on the demographic information, trends in technology, the delivery of healthcare, the other healthcare delivery systems in Vermont, to try to come up with what the forecast would be for demand on, for the medical center. And that's where we arrived at. And that number was really, we were confronted with that, and trying to determine the next step, which was to figure out how could we possibly accommodate those additional acute care beds at the medical center. And so we put a plan in place to really understand what were some of the possibilities to be able to create the capacity in the future. And that's what really initiated this whole, this whole work project that we're doing here. So essentially, it's really based on what we believe are valid forecasts for inpatient bed requirements. We aren't looking to propose a specific project this time. We really just wanted to understand what type of development envelope we need to create on the campus to be able to, to achieve the goal of establishing those 242 beds, probably most importantly, on the medical center campus. If we're not able to accommodate those beds on the medical center campus, and there's a possibility we may not, you know, based on where we are in the whole overall public process, we need to figure out where they would go. And that's likely means developing somewhere besides Burlington to be able to develop that capacity. So we've really worked really hard to figure out how we could develop a template to be able to develop on the medical center campus to enable us to create those additional beds with a minimal amount of impact on the community at large, but more importantly, to the benefit of the community. And so that's kind of where we, we left off. We're really just trying to understand what capacity we have on the campus and how we can best deploy that into the future.
And so the, the other note for you all here that really impacts our conversations is that UVM Medical Center serves a wide geographical area. Truly, we are serving all Vermonter's, and we are also serving northern New York. We are the only Level One trauma center in Vermont, and we also are the only one that is accessible to northern New York. And so as you might imagine, we do very much appreciate the need to balance transportation management, and that we have patients and families who are coming to the hospital way outside of local public transportation access, and frankly, with any public transportation access. So also, just continuing with the background here, is that I wanted to note that this has been a collaborative effort. And so far, we have had five information and work sessions with the neighbors, which is why I thanked them at the beginning of this presentation, because they tended to be an hour and a half to two hours, sometimes longer in length. We also have had communication with the Ward One NPA, and then regular communication with the city administration. So what you will see in the MOU is that we have several commitments. I, just to highlight a few, that we have maintained a commitment to the East Avenue neighborhood, neighbors, to continue to include a transitional buffer, regardless of whether or not the ordinance is changed to allow for a smaller buffer. We will continue to avoid construction on the Sliding Hill and the community, community garden area. You know, for many of you who may have noticed from Colchester Avenue, you can see the Mary Fletcher Hospital, which was the original hospital building. We agreed to protect that original hospital building. And additionally, which we believe is in strong alignment with the city's priorities, is that we commit to supporting efforts to add affordable housing. We continue our efforts to design facilities that are climate resilient. And then finally, we are committed to communicating regularly with hospital-adjacent neighbors. So we are asking the city to support, so UVM Medical Center is asking the city to support two changes to the Comprehensive Development Ordinance. Expansion of the Height Overlay District. And so we describe this in the memo as well as in the slides here. The, we are looking to extend it to Mary Fletcher Drive. And when Dave shows you the, the slide, I think that'll make more sense. And also to increase the allowable height by 40 feet. This is still within the campus core of UVM Medical Center's campus. We also have asked, as has been noted a few times this evening, an addition of 856 parking spaces with no anticipated net cre, increase in surface parking. And I think that Dave's explanation of our patient bed demand really is the, the best information for you all to understand what's driving that request. And so in return, in addition to the commitments to the neighbors that we've already laid out for you, we have also committed to the city several items that support those two requests. The first one regarding the expansion of the Height Overlay District is that we are committed to resilient infrastructure. We are also committed to meeting with the Department of Public Works to become more informed and educated regarding the water infrastructure needs. And regarding the parking and the potential impact on congestion in the area, we, as founding members of CATMA, will continue to participate in CATMA. We are also committed to working with the city to create and pursue multimodal transportation options. And while this doesn't belong in the land use MOU, we're really excited to share that by working with DPW and GMT, we are looking to roll out an unlimited bus pass program for GMT for our, for our staff, starting in our next fiscal year, which will be October 1. And then this is you.
Yeah. What I'll do is I'll take us through these, these graphics, try to make sense of them, and respond to any questions that anybody may have. The, the first graphic is really simply the way the campus exists currently. And you can see, it's fully developed, it's essentially 100% built out on the campus. There's no ability to add any more buildings on the campus. We can only add capacity or new construction by tearing existing buildings down and rebuilding in those footprints, but we need to build them higher. So that's essentially what we're confronted with when we look at this at the current site. The next slide, this depicts the light, or baby blue area, I guess if you want to call it that, is the current core overlay for the medical center campus. That was, I, I don't remember exactly when that was adopted, but it was prior to the, the Miller Building, when we needed to be able to go, go taller. And the Miller Building was originally envisioned to be a four-story inpatient building. It's, it's actually seven stories if you add everything together with a canopy underneath, but with the capacity to add four more stories on top of that. And we, we crafted the overlay to enable us to be able to build the Miller Building from its current heights up to the expanded height. And you'll see that in a subsequent slide. But that was originally the area that was established for that. Next slide, I think. What you see here is the, the orange area, I guess I call it orange, to the north of the baby blue area. It represents the area that we're asking for city approval to be able to move that core overlay district from, to the north to Mary Fletcher Drive, to enable us to have a larger footprint to build taller, taller buildings. That's what this does. This slide is a very busy slide, and I'll attempt to walk us through it, although I am having a hard time seeing it at this point. But essentially, I would like to call your attention to the, the baby blue and the orange areas that I, that I previously discussed. There's a, there's a cross-section of the campus on the, it's on the lower portion of the slide, and it's color-coded to match vertically those areas. So essentially, you can see that cross-section on the right-hand side, all the way to the right, is the top of the UVM Water Tower. That water tower set the top elevation for that blue core overlay district that's in the current regulations. We are asking to expand that core overlay district into the orange area and go 40 feet taller in that orange area to enable us to build taller buildings in that area to be able to create more inpatient beds. The dotted line, blue dotted line, about halfway between, as we go to the right-hand side where the water tower is, you'll see another dotted line. That dotted line is the underlying zoning ordinance, heights limitations for the medical center campus, which in layman's term is really just defined as a plane of the tallest building on the campus that existed in 1999. And that was the McClure Building. And that established the base elevation across the campus. And what we're asking for, the blue area was the previous ICO, or core overlay that was granted, and we're now asking for that, that orange-colored area to be expanded and go on a higher elevation. If, if that's clear, if it's not clear, I'll be able to respond to any questions that anybody asks. Yes?
Sure. Counselor Shannon?
I think I'm not totally clear on the height overlay, which I thought was Miller.
The blue.
Where is, where is the Miller, is, where is the Miller bil, building on the?
Okay. The, if you see, in the blue area, there's kind of a, a greenish-colored area that you see. It's a block.
It's this small area on the inside?
Yeah, that's a graphic. It's, it's, these are not to scale, by the way. These are just presentation. That is the Miller Building shown in that green area.
Okay. Yeah, I see that. Yeah, I see that. It's more confusing where it is here.
I think it actually says Miller Building with a vertical expansion that was approved in the last core overlay.
Any further questions right now, Counselor Shannon? Okay. Are you open to receiving other questions now or did you have anything further in your presentation? Okay. Why don't we wrap up the presentation and then we can turn to counselors for any other questions or feedback.
This graphic is an exhibit that just depicts, not to scale, we wanted to kind of memorialize what, what we were talking about when we talked about the garden and the sledding hill. So this is really just to demonstrate where those reside on the campus. The transitional buffer area here depicted in the dark blue, this is in current zoning ordinance is 150 feet from the center line into the property where there's a reduced density, I believe we're at 40% in this area. And that's the limit on any development that could occur within that blue area. This overall green space plan shows that core overall, the transitional buffer in the lighter green on East Avenue and Colchester, but the darker green in the internal portions of the campus, that is where the highest density for development can occur. And that's within, that, I think is up to 60% density. And this is just a depiction of the green space on the campus.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. Mayor, before turning to counselors, we'll recognize you.
Thank you very much. I would just like to provide a little context as, although I told my staff this week, I'm not supposed to call myself a new mayor anymore as I've rounded into nine months. But I do want to just acknowledge a bit of the process that it's been like as a new, new person in this role, inheriting clearly a lot of work that has been done prior to my, my start in April. And to really lift up the real intentional effort to make this as robust a process as possible with the neighbors. Prior to my start, there clearly have been a lot of points of engagement with the community in and around the campus up in Ward One. I appreciate the flexibility by UVM MC as when a new mayor comes in, you inherit a lot of things that have predated you. And to do my due diligence to get caught up and review with my new team, I appreciated the extra time offered to us to, to be fully diverse, understand the history, and also present some new and important elements that I wanted to highlight that are in the MOU and also in the accompanying memo. Because it is important to me in any agreement with an institution in our community to take the time needed to make sure there's alignment with the goals and needs of the community. And I wanted to be clear to call these out because I do think we, we got to that point and I don't intend to love long agreements and I've been transparent about that and will be always transparent about it because a lot can happen in our city over the course of 20 years. And so it's even more important to me to make sure any agreement, and I understand this is a voluntary agreement, but, but shows the values and alignment for what is currently and projected to need, be the need for our greater city. I continually say the, the health and wellbeing of all the institutions in this city are intertwined with the wellbeing of the city. So I wanted to call out in particular that within the actual MOU, item 18 speaks to some new elements around climate and some partnership with Burlington Electric Department to be intentional and creative around battery storage and other ways we can work intentionally around our climate impact and mitigation efforts we could possibly do with our partners as an institution. Item 23 within the MOU is a particularly important one to me around labor standards. So when and if there's more construction on the, on the campus, it's important that, that we be thoughtful around the people who are, would be employed to do construction practices. The language here tracks very closely to the language within the city place agreements because I want there to be consistency within the city of Burlington of when we talk about the, the jobs and the wage standards and the, the protections for the employees building new, new buildings in our community, that we have standards and protections and we define what that is. So that's where that language came from. In the accompanying letter, there's just two more points I want to emphasize because I hear from the public and the community around the concern around transportation impacts. And certainly a part of our goals is to encourage people to get out of their cars. And we've had some conversations which I've appreciated with UVM Medical Center around getting creative and pushing not only in their continued membership within CATMA, but other ways we can continue that conversation, which is reflected in the letter, the letter that accompanies the MOU, to continue to have those conversations, to minimize impact and encourage our greater community as, to get out of our cars and think of other modes of transportation. And then the final piece in that same letter is in reference to our infrastructure issues for which you hear a lot from this administration. And obviously, again, in our, in the category of mutual benefit, we need infrastructure, including our, our water reservoir up on the hill close to their campus, to be functional and, and able, able to support not only their current operations but future operations as well as the larger Ward One and Ward Six on the top of the hill. So I've appreciated those notes in this letter, that the conversations will be ongoing, knowing our collective needs we have now and in the near and long future as this, as the city. So just wanted to make sure I called those out and I do appreciate the hard work and patience with the new administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any counselors with questions or comments at this time? We'll go Counselor Bergman, oh, go Counselor Newbezer and then Counselor Bergman and then Counselor McKnight.
Thank you for the presentation and taking the, the time tonight and, and good to see you both. I just wanted to start, one, with thanking folks in Ward One and over, on East Ave in particular, some of which participated in public comment tonight and shared thoughts on this MOU. It is no secret that city counselors do not have endless capacity, nor do we really have staff, this isn't a full-time job. And so what I've always said and one of the main themes of my campaign and things that I heard from neighbors at the door, was this idea that we are in it as a ward, particularly as we're talking about interactions with large institutions like the University of Vermont, the UVM MC. And so Ward One in particular is affected by, by these issues disproportionately and the fact that we have like the dream team of neighbors. And I was going to try to list them, there's, there's Gene, there's Peg, Richard, Sharon, Cindy, like so many other, other, Martha, and I know I'm missing quite a bit. So I, I appreciate that because I couldn't play the role that I should be playing on this council in regards to this issue without that work. With that said, there were really four questions raised by some of the folks I just mentioned that, that I wanted to run by. And I know that I got information from some folks in, in city staff prior to this meeting, but I, I just wanted to, to raise them and we don't necessarily need to go into so much depth, but I wanted to make sure that East Ave residents, folks know that I'll be following up with, with those answers. And some of this is touched upon in the materials provided, but I think, you know, this is a nightmare to wrap your head around as a topic. So, and, and given the, the impact that it could have potentially on, on East Ave and Colchester, in particulars, understand that, that residents want to be sure. So I got one of four questions and I guess I'll just go one by one if that's okay. I don't want to like throw too much at you at once. So the first question was, what is the current height limit for both the north side of the Mary Fletcher, Fletcher, where, in parentheses, site of the current McClure Garage, rather, and any parking structures by the Water Tower? Does this MOU in any way change the limits to these?
So as Dave Kielty said earlier, the area outside of the height overlay is not subject to that 540-foot elevation plane is otherwise, it is subject to the McClure Building height, which is the tallest structure at the tallest elevation on the campus of the UVM MC campus. Not, this, this does not include the UVM campus, I want to make that distinction, that confused even those of us in our office for a little bit. So the McClure Garage is about, I think it's 340 feet above sea level. The McClure Building is 450 feet. And so a building, if it were to be located in the location of the McClure Garage, would be anywhere from 102 to 112 or 14 feet, I believe. Floor-to-floor heights for hospital buildings tend to be a bit taller than you would get in a residential building, but if that's probably an eight-story building or so along Colchester. The garage location hypothetically, if it's located near the Water Tower, I believe those buildings are, that the elevation there is about 380 feet, so you've got about 70 feet to, until you reach the height maximum.
Thank you. The next question was refer, was what does this new MOU do to the proposed vacant land north of Mary Fletcher Drive? What does the revised MOU actually do to building heights there, setbacks, et cetera?
Yeah, so again, the MOU doesn't propose or contemplate changing the height regulations in that area, which is outside of the height overlay, does not, neither proposes to adjust the extent of the transitional buffer, which extends 150 feet from the center lines of Colchester Avenue and East Avenue into the campus. Does not contemplate changing the setback, which is 15 feet from East Avenue and Colchester Avenue. The lot coverage is a bit more complicated. The lot coverage can be up to 40% within that transitional buffer. It can be up to 60% on the, on the aggregate of the UVM MC campus, except it can go up to 65% for every 1% decrease within the transitional buffer. So the example that I gave in the response to the neighbors was that if the transitional buffer has a lot coverage of 38%, then the aggregate campus coverage could go up to 62%. I believe that covers, pun intended, the other, all of the standards in the code that address this area north of Mary Fletcher Drive.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Overtime, but I'm going to follow up with folks on East Ave. Appreciate all of your time and Chapins as well and all of the folks from the Medical Center's time as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Newbezer. Counselor Bergman and then Counselors McKnight and Litwin.
Thank you. It's, it's nice to see you again. I think that I was just trying to find my notes from the conversation that we had in March or thereabout, or the, the summertime. I guess my, my initial conversations internally were in March. So I'm glad that we've made some progress on a couple of the areas that I expressed an interest on and I want to focus on them. Let me just start by just letting you know, I am not a fan of canyon creation development. And so I am not a fan when I go to Winuski and I go past the VSAC Building of how close and how tall it is. I, I don't think that is good cityscape. And so I am concerned when I hear neighbors talk about the, you know, a building that's close to Colchester Avenue, creating that. So I just want to put that out, you know, in terms of setbacks and in terms of that effect. I don't think it is in the interest of the people in the neighborhood or even the people going through in terms of livability. That being said, I am happy that you've moved in provision number 15 around CATMA and TDM. I would say that I'm, I'm encouraged by what you said, Karen, in terms of the bus passes because we've got a bus system that needs a much more vigorous connection with the business community, with employers. And you can really be a, a model like the, the creation of CATMA was, and I think you can take this to the next level. I am actually looking to embed or hoping that more specifics I'd, in that section. Right now, it is, it is very loose. It makes lots of sense in a very general way, but it doesn't give examples, it doesn't give commitments. And I would, I would like for us to move in a, a much more rigorous way there so that we are showing a, a roadmap on this transportation demand management scene. And I, like I had said earlier in the prior comments about the impact fees, you know, we, we've got an opportunity. I understand why you would need more beds, particularly if you're trying to get more singles and you've got sick people and so mass transportation is not the place necessi- that, that, we want people on the buses, but you know, all the people who are working there. So you, you have a tremendous opportunity and we have as a overarching community, an overall community in which you are part of, a real responsibility to, to do that. And in regard to the, just the climate change, it's really the same sort of thing where, I mean, I had raised a list of issues when we met. I, I forget if it was in April or it was in June or something. I actually have a, a list of all the things that I asked and you said, oh, we're doing all these. And so things like thermal energy networks and really, you know, really again, more specificity. And part of this is because it, it sets a template for the type of work that we want to do with other institutions. It, it sets a, a framework with, which we can say, look, this is a, a real way that we're implementing our climate strategy and we're doing it in collaboration and cooperation with partners. And the last thing, and it is sort of a question, in, in paragraph 22, I'm, I'm just not clear about what the future of One South Prospect is. I, I know you're looking to vacate it, but you know, there is not any clarity with regard to what the uses are. You're going to relocate services, let me just scroll.
Counsel, Counselor Bergman, would you like for Dave Kielty to respond to that?
Sure, sure. Thanks.
So, so well, One South Prospect Street, the old DeGosrein unit, that building is actually serviced very well over, since the merger of the Medical Center back in, I think, 1967. And there's been a variety of uses. The, we don't own the building, we have a lease with the university. It's very difficult for us to make large capital investments in the building if we're a tenant. So there's no, there's no return on that. So our goal would be to find appropriate, and, and many of the occupancy that are there now don't meet contemporary standards for physician offices and clinics. So we'd like to get them relocated to more suitable facilities. That takes time and money. Obviously, we're highly regulated with regulatory process and capital constraints and such. It's a long way for me telling you, I don't exactly know when we're going to be able to come up with clear visibility on when we'll be vacating in that building. I think we're going to be there for quite a while, at least five years. There just aren't the resources necessary to find replacement facilities. And the long-term uses, we work continuously with the university and my understanding is they will continue to utilize the building. They may develop some more comprehensive plan for that whole block, but we're not aware of that at this point. So I don't, I'm sure that doesn't satisfy your needs, but that's my perspective.
I, I mean, I think that having a little bit more-
Your time, you're, sorry, Counselor Bergman.
Sure, just, just to close that on, on Solid Prospect, it would be helpful to have a little bit more clarity in the MOU with regard to that, even if it's just something that puts something out in the future as something for us to, to continue to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bergman. We've Counselor McKnight and then Counselor Litwin. I will note the time, it is 9:30 and we have not yet gotten to our deliberative agenda, but, so we're going to end it with Counselor Litwin.
Thanks. I'll be pretty quick, President Travers. Thank you for being here, this is very helpful presentation. I am also a little concerned about, what is the, what is the term, channeling? Canyoning, canyoning. And I, and in general, I was wondering, and maybe you've done this with other counselors, I, I think it would really help me to come to the campus and see, and just walk around and see, you know, what it feels like. So just a request for that. And perhaps we can coordinate with multiple counselors if anyone else wants to do that. You know, as I listened to the presentation, it, it does seem like there's a sort of almost competitive dynamic going on between hospital beds and parking spaces. And so, and I think it's great that- And so and I think it's great that you're working on this bus pass plan with the employees. That's amazing. But I'm just wondering if you have explored any type of mode shift encouragement or transportation support with your patient community and/or their visitors. I know obviously some patients cannot be flexible with their transportation due to ability and, you know, dealing with illness. But, you know, I was treated for a long time at UVM and I rode my bike to every appointment and I still do. And I think there are a lot of patients and families who would be open to that if there was some incentivization. And it just seems like, you know, you're trying to fit almost 800 new parking spaces on a campus and you also want, you know, hundreds of new rooms. And if you didn't need so many parking spaces, you would be able to fit more rooms with this shorter building, maybe. So just something that I'm sort of, those are just topics that are muddling away in my brain and I wanted to share that with you. I don't need an answer on any of that right now, but it just stood out to me from the presentation. Thank you. Thank you for the suggestion regarding the tour, so.
Thank you, Councilor McKnight. Councilor Litwin will wrap up with you.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for a very interesting presentation. It's exciting to see that you'll be offering a bus pass to your employees. I'm sure that will be a huge weight off of the parking garages, and I look forward to seeing that. I want to thank Councilor McKnight for sort of queuing this other point up. When we're having conversations about vehicles and vehicle traffic, we are almost always having conversations that are rooted in ableism. And I appreciated the presentation that pointed out that this is a regional hub that people are driving in from hours away because they have no access to public transportation and this is the closest major hospital to them. So that is the reality. And we've just had many, many conversations about neighborhood code. And pretty much every area of town is sharing some kind of burden of the growth of our city. The South End particularly has seen its share of construction related to the roadway and soon to be a huge housing project, the New North End as well, and all over the city. So the hospital neighborhood is not going to be immune to that reality. But I do hope, and it sounds like you are listening, that you will do everything that you can to make sure that the residents who have clearly been very engaged and are very opposed to making to canyoning, which I agree can have a very negative effect. And I'm sure you'll come up with something fantastic. And then additionally, I would just add, there was an interview with former UVM President Suresh Garamella a while back where, you know, he had talked about building dormitories behind, I want to say the Hilton. And I think his his argument was, well, the pavement's already there. And so there are there are potential ways to expand satellite parking for folks and maybe make it free, which might incentivize folks who are driving in from out of town to park there with free sort of shuttle busing. And I think you already do some of that. And lastly, I just want to point out, most of the hospital traffic is probably coming in from Beaumont Avenue, right off of the jug handle and the first entrance off of East Avenue. Most of the traffic coming in through the Mary Fletcher area, you know, that's our local traffic for the most part. That's people who live in Burlington and Winuski, not folks from Plattsburgh or Montpelier. So I want to invite us to not demonize car transport as much as we do sometimes. And the reality is, is we have elders, we have disabled folks, we have people on work schedules, we have people who have to go in for quick treatment, blood draws, whatever, and they just can't wait on a bus system that we are cutting funding from. So I leave that there and thank you so that we can get to our deliberative agenda.
Thank you, Councilor Litwin. I appreciate you all being here this evening. Any final words from your end? Or I know you'll be back again, but appreciate the presentation tonight.
Thank you for the time.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will now turn to item eight on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. I would invite a motion to adopt the consent agenda and take the actions indicated. So moved. Thank you, Councilor Barlow.
I'd like to I'd like to make a motion, a separate motion.
There is a motion on the table right now. So there's a motion from Councilor Barlow. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Newbezer. It was hand raised here. Any discussion on that motion?
Yes.
On the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, not on the consent agenda. My apologies.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion on the consent agenda? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Councilor Litwin, you would like to be recognized?
Yes, please. I would like, because of the last meeting we had in December, Chief Murad had stayed very, very late and we had promised him to be first on the agenda, I believe, President Travers. And so I would like to make a motion to move items three and items four up to in between number one and two, since we have now resolved number one.
All right. I will note, Councilor Litwin, that we've had folks from town meeting TV here as well for quite some time. But Councilor Litwin has moved to suspend our rules, to move items 10.3 and items 10.4 in front of item 10.2, so that they would be the first items in our deliberative agenda. Is there a second to that motion?
Point of information?
Yes, Councilor Newbezer.
Does this vote need two-thirds support?
It would. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
So second from Councilor McKnight. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. And I suspect this will be a split vote, so will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilor Barlow?
No.
Councilor Bergman?
No.
Councilor Broderick?
No.
Councilor Carpenter?
No.
No.
Councilor Grant?
No.
Councilor Kane?
No.
Councilor Litwin?
Yes.
Councilor McKnight?
Yes.
Councilor Newbezer?
Excuse me, no.
Councilor Shannon?
No.
City Council President Travers?
No.
Two ayes, nine nays.
Okay, so with only two in the affirmative and nine against, that motion fails. And we will now move to item nine on our agenda, which is the public hearing that was scheduled on our charter change items. There are three charter change items that are in motion right now, one on banning guns in bars, a second on our redistricting process, and a third on rental period notifications. We have three individuals here in City Hall who signed up for public forum. We will provide each two minutes, just as we did in our public forum, on this public hearing, which we will now open at 9:40 PM. The first individual wishing to speak in this public hearing is William Lackey, who will be followed by Chris Hasley. And then Romeo Von Herman, and then Sharon Buescher. You signed up online. You were the one person online for the public hearing. So that will be the four individuals speaking in the public hearing. William? Yeah, go ahead. Just please make sure the microphone's on.
Yep, hello? I wrote a five-minute thing, so let me just shuffle my papers real quick.
We can be a little bit flexible, so.
It's probably four minutes.
Okay.
So I started searching for a new apartment in early November, three months before my lease was set to end. On January 31st, I scoured Zillow, Apartments.com, Realtor.com, and as many local property management websites as I could find. I searched nearly every day, sending dozens of messages and emails asking if any properties would be available for a February lease start. The problem I ran into was that most active listings had availability only about two weeks to a month out from when they were posted. When I asked if a February 1st lease start would be possible, I was often ignored and told or told, we don't know the availability of our units that far ahead. One alternative was extending my lease month to month until the June student leasing cycle, but that doesn't really align with my schedule as a young working professional. Eventually, I found a place available for a January 1st lease. It was posted on Friday, December 13th. Just three hours after the listing went up, I set up a tour for Sunday. But by Saturday, the next day, it had already been snatched up by someone else. Luckily, the other potential tenant fell through and we were able to sign a lease starting January 15th. We signed the lease on December 31st and gave a 30-day notice to vacate. At that point, I was prepared to bite the bullet and pay an overlapping 15 days on the two leases. The next day, I received an email stating that I would be responsible for February's rent. This is my first lease that I signed in Vermont. I'm from Florida originally, and to my knowledge, none of the leases that I signed there required a notice to vacate. So this wasn't a section of my lease that I paid much attention to before signing. I am extremely lucky to have a family who can lend me money, and I'm fortunate to have been able to commit an hour a day, five days a week for two months to find an apartment. Even with all that effort, I only signed a lease 30 days before my current lease is set to end. My lease, along with the Burlington City Ordinance, states that tenants must provide notice equivalent to two payment periods, usually two months before vacating. I asked the property management company if there were any way we wouldn't have to pay the extra month and was told that if they can rent the apartment out before the end of February, I would be reimbursed for the portion of the rent covered by the new tenant. It has now been 13 days since I gave my notice and the property managers have not listed the unit for rent. The point I'm making is this, landlords in the city are not in a rush to fill apartments. They know they will find someone, even if they wait until the last minute. Meanwhile, tenants are desperately searching for a place to live, asking tenants to provide a 60-day notice when landlords often post listings only a month ahead and titles landlords to free money without providing a service. This further heightens the current housing crisis, especially since the unit may appear occupied on paper, even if it's vacant. In a city with a vacancy rate under 1%, this only makes things worse. I would like to ask that the city's code on this issue be changed in a way that reflects the current housing market and that leans more in favor of tenants rather than landlords where there is already a significant power imbalance. In email exchanges with some of you, I recall a council member noting that the change in notice requirements happened when the landlord's notice period was extended. I hope this change can shorten tenants' notice periods without shortening the landlord's notice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your patience sticking around until now for that comment. Appreciate your being here. Next individual in person is Chris Hasley, to be followed by Romeo Von Herman.
Before I begin my comments, I'd like to seek a point of clarification from you, President Travers, regarding the hearing, if I may?
Sure.
I had been told by councilors prior to this meeting that there was no limit on the speaking at the hearing, that you could just speak. Now, I have no intention to speak for a length of time, but I did want to speak on all three of the items. And just curious, you know, that it seems like, based on my reading of the statute, and again, I'm not an attorney, I'm a layperson, but it seems like each ballot question is a separate proposal and that there should be a hearing on each proposal. So it seems to me that there should have been perhaps three separate hearings, one for each question. But after speaking with some councilors prior to the meeting and being told that there was no time limit, I had intended to roll all of my comments into the time allotted. So I'm not really clear how I should proceed in this manner.
I think it is, I mean, certainly folks cannot speak indefinitely on these items. It is our practice to hold a public hearing for all of our charter items, not individual hearings for each charter item. As we just did for the previous speaker, we were flexible there. And so, you know, we are asking speakers, which would be my authority as council president, to try to limit their comments to two minutes. But if we don't hit that mark, then we can be flexible. Just ask that we that we try in the interest of time.
All right, thank you, President Travers. So without further ado, I'd like to address the trial change relating to firearms. After reviewing the exceptions, I think that there probably ought to be an exception for employees in addition to the owner. When employees are coming home late at night, that's typically when a lot of the public safety issues happen here in the town, and we certainly wouldn't want to deprive them of the right to defend themselves, particularly in light of the types of violence that we're seeing here. More importantly, though, I don't know that that ordinance actually goes far enough. And rather than focus solely on the individual who is carrying the firearm, I think we ought to be looking at the establishments as well. For example, if the ordinance were to pass and an individual were to bring a firearm into an establishment and there were to be an incident, that means that the establishment has failed in its duty to prevent the firearm from entering into the establishment in first place. And it seems to me that there ought to be penalties for the establishment for failing to secure the perimeter of their building. So I would suggest in that note that if a gun violence incident takes place in an establishment or on the property and controlled by the establishment, that the establishment would also be subject to penalties. And in my view, I think a 90-day suspension of their liquor license would be wholly appropriate. Regarding the changes to the proposed changes for the notice for renters, as many of you know, I've been a longtime renter here in town for about 25 years. A lot of the stuff that the council is taking up seems kind of, to be honest, a little bit performative. I can certainly see some benefit based on the comments of the prior speaker, how having a longer notice time would be helpful in securing housing. But the real issue here is affordability. And as one of my former colleagues remarked before he returned to New York because he couldn't afford to live here anymore, he said about the former question on the just cause of actions, what good is that when you can't afford the rent? And then the final ballot item is the redistricting. I'm not really sure what was really driving this, but having been involved in that process, I think it would be important to have the legislature involved as a kind of checks and balances. But if you're in the mood to be crafting charter change, might I suggest that perhaps we look at establishing an independent council to look at this issue as well, to just to make it a little bit less partisan than it has been in the past. So those are my thoughts on that. I think I've been able to get it in about two minutes and 15 seconds, so.
Okay, well done.
Happy hour.
Chris?
Thank you so much.
Yep, I will also note, just for the public's information, that this is the first of two public hearings that will take part with respect to our charter changes. Our second public hearing will be held at our next council meeting on January 27th. And just for clarification for councilors, based on comments made in the public hearing, the council is permitted, either this hearing or the second hearing, to make changes based on the comments that are made. Our next speaker is Romeo Von Herman. And then Sharon, we will look to see if you're still online and give you an opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, I promise. So my biggest concern regarding the firearm ban is not so much of the ban itself, but the uncharted territory we're entering in terms of enforcing it. I think this is going to put a lot of businesses, especially the liquor, anybody that is selling alcohol in this in this manner, how are they going to enforce somebody having a weapon that is concealed? I do understand here in the state of Vermont that a this is a carry weapons state, I think, whether it's concealed or not, that you're allowed to carry. But if I work at a bar or I'm at the security, I mean, I don't know how difficult it is for a person to like want to check if somebody is actually carrying a gun. So my thing is, are we considering what safety precautions or what are we going to do as a city to protect these frontline staff that are working at these institutions? So that is my biggest concern as far as that is concerned. So thank you.
Thank you, Romeo. Could we promote Sharon to panelist? Sharon, I had you on the list and you're our last speaker at the moment in this public hearing.
Okay, thank you so much. I wanted to first of all say that as having been on the council and being supportive of the ban on firearms in liquor establishments that serve liquor, I was happy to see this come back. I think alcohol and guns don't mix well. And so I understand there are some, there's more work to do, but I would really like to see if this has a chance this time. So I thank you so much for bringing this back. As far as regulating rental notification, that was identified, that with the housing crisis that we have, that the notification is really sorely inadequate. So I support that also. The reason I really wanted to speak was, besides the fact that I'm losing my voice, is that on the redistricting, and I agree with you, taking trying to take this back from the legislature and keep it just at the city council level. I support that. The only thing I'd like you to consider is, it's minor, but it's the effective date, which you state at the end saying that the effective date is immediate upon passage or what is whatever is or a different date that's been established. My point is that I would like you to consider removing immediate upon passage. I think that even minor tweaks to redistricting means that people have to be I think that even minor tweaks to redistricting means that people have to be informed that they're now in a different district, and I think that notification is key. And on the off chance, although this did happen during my time on the council, that you redistrict an elected official out of their district or ward, that would bring out some other issues that you'd have to address, and obviously, that would trigger a new date. But I still think even if there was no adverse impact except a change in the boundaries, notification to the public that they're now in a different district is really important. And so I ask you to remove the effective date as being immediate, and thank you so much.
Thank you. There's no one else currently signed up for this public hearing, so I will ask folks here in person in City Hall, as well as we'll check the list online if there's anyone further who wishes to participate in this public hearing. I see no one here in City Hall and no one online. Per our practice, I will ask a second time whether or not there's anyone else who wishes to participate in this public hearing. Councillor Carpenter.
Can we comment?
Yes.
Just several comments, the last of former councillor Bushers. The redistricting thing requires that we do redistricting no sooner than five years, which means even if that's effective, we couldn't redistrict for five more years, so it's not going to affect anybody immediately. It just means we could do it. And I wanted to clarify that, there was a post about doing it time to time, and again, it's at least a five-year minimum before we can redistrict. And then a number of people commented about an interest in independent authority to do that. This does not accomplish that, but I do want to point out that by ordinance, we could create a process different than what we've had in the past.
Thank you, Councillor Carpenter. Is there anyone else? Yes, Councillor Newbezer.
Just very briefly, a few things. One, because on the redistricting piece, because it came up in our MPA when, we discussed this a few months back, I just want to again reiterate to folks that, you know, assuming this moves forward and through the legislature, voters still need to approve any redistricting apps, because I had heard that as a concern, and wanting to make sure that that was clear to folks. And then the other piece, I don't know if my fellow councillor is making this point, but in response to someone talking in public comment about an independent body when it comes to redistricting, I think certainly in Burlington and certainly across the state of Vermont and across the country, there are many instances of political parties, you know, getting involved in redistricting of lines. Elected officials should not be writing our own boundaries. That has always been a recipe for disaster. There's like numerous, numerous examples of this happening at all levels of government. And so I think, my hope is over the next number of years, although it's not an easy question to solve, that we pursue that before the next big redistricting process.
Thank you, Councillor Newbezer. Is there anyone else who wishes to participate in this public hearing? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will close. The first public hearing on these charter changes at 9:56 PM. Again, a reminder that we will have our second public hearing at our next council meeting on January 27th.
Point of information.
Yes, Councillor Broderick.
President Travers, can you, I guess, re-describe how the amendment process works? Specifically, if one of us have amendments to present, do these, do those need to be deliberated on prior to the second public hearing so that the public gets the chance to view those changes if they are to be passed? Or would it, or if we do deliberate on it after the second public hearing, if they are substantive or substantia, I don't know which word, would it necessitate a third public hearing?
So I welcome the city attorney's comment on this as well, but my understanding is that pursuant to Section 2645 of Title 17 under Vermont statutes, if a charter proposal is made by the legislative body, which we are the legislative body, and all three of these charter proposals were made by us, the legislative body may revise the proposal as a result of suggestions and recommendations made at a public hearing. But in no event shall such revisions be made less than 20 days before the date of the meeting to vote on the charter proposal. So here in Burlington, the date of the meeting to vote on the charter proposal is our town meeting day. January 27th is the last date on which this council can take action to place items on the ballot. So after our second public hearing, it would be in order for a councillor to amend any one of the charter questions based solely on comments or recommendations made either tonight or in the second public hearing on the 27th. So if it's, if the amendment is not based on comments made in the public hearing, it would be out of order. But if we want to make amendments to be responsive to public hearing comments, we can do that on the 27th, but that would be the last date, and there would be no need for a third public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so now, I believe it is time to turn to our deliberative agenda. And we already addressed item 10.1 on the agenda. We have item 10.2, which is from Town Meeting TV, and then we'll turn to item 10.3, the police chief's report, with a lot of gratitude, again, to our representatives here from Town Meeting TV's patients, as well as to you, chief, for your patience this evening. I know we promised in earlier time, last time, yet here we are. But we'll start with the team from Town Meeting TV, and we'll turn the floor over to you for a presentation.
Yeah, thank you all. So thank you for accepting our presentation. My name is Jordan Mitchell, Town Meeting TV's operations director, and joining me.
Hi, my name is Megan O'Rourke, and I am the, one of the co-executive directors of CCTV. And I'll give a little overview in a minute.
Sure, my name's Kevin Lumpkin. I am actually your representative to Town Meeting TV. It was once held by councillor Paul. I used to be the representative for Winuski. When I moved to Burlington, councillor Paul saw an opportunity to reduce her workload, and this relationship was born.
And so we are here to request contributions as part of the city's FY26 budget and provide an overview of how funds received were used in the last fiscal year. In the past, this has been brought just to the Board of Finance, but we now have the opportunity to bring it to the entire city council.
Great, thanks. So we'll give a little bit of overview. CCTV is home to Town Meeting Television, CCTV Productions, CCTV Archives, and the Vermont Language Justice Project. CCTV started in 1984, and Town Meeting Television is the government access operation that began in 1991. CCTV has a long relationship before Town Meeting Television of recording these city council meetings, going live with these city council meetings in 2005 on Burlington Telecom, and working with the city to provide meeting coverage, event coverage, studio use, equipment use, civic education. We currently have a project with SITO, working, building a neighborhood media internship program. Let me just look at my notes, make sure I got all of that down. And tonight, the main bulk of the presentation is going to be presented by Jordan Mitchell, who's one of the co-directors of Town Meeting Television, and then, you know it's late and you have no questions for us, but we are happy to answer them and happy to see you all in real life.
So Town Meeting TV submits this report, which is on your packet page 233, as part of our visit to brief the city council, on Town Meeting TV operations here from the community, on how Town Meeting TV might better serve your needs, and requesting inclusion in your annual city budget, as we will outline below, and also is outlined in your packet. So Town Meeting TV is the government access organization serving Burlington, but also Essex, Essex Junction, South Burlington, Williston, Winuski, and parts of Colchester. The government access services provide gavel-to-gavel video coverage, live streaming, technical support, archiving of video, our studio, equipment, and also media education, as Megan touched upon, for the people and municipal partners in these communities. Services and coverages are allocated based on cable subscriber numbers through what is referred to, as I'll refer to here, as the contract. So in the last year, Town Meeting TV produced and supported 1,519 programs for all of our member communities. 377 of these was categorized as municipal coverage. For Burlington, the contract stipulates production of six meetings per month and at least one general program per month. For Burlington, we produced 87 meetings, specifically this was City Council, Board of Finance, and Development Review Board. In addition, we provided live streaming, recording, and hybrid support for 66 neighborhood planning assembly meetings. So outside of the regular meeting support and coverage, you might have seen Town Meeting TV out and about in the community. So some of the general programming covered, including the Church Street Tree Lighting Ceremony, community organized rallies, the Lunch and Learn Series at Ojave Zetic, coverage of the total sonar eclipse, the Church Street Earth Day Celebration, Green Up the Pine Street Barge Canal, Memorial Day Remembrance, Juneteenth, Festival of Fools, groundbreaking on the new affordable housing and Veterans Center, Labor Day Picnic and Working Class Barbecue, the Pride and Festival Parade, and also some of the mayor's public safety forums, as well as the NCAA welcoming to Patrick Gymnast Gym, we were there as well. And so that's just kind of scratching the surface of the more general programs that we cover outside of contours. And if you feel, if you fear there, if you feel there are programs we are not covering, we would encourage you to reach out to the trustee who represents Burlington, Kevin. We're also working with the mayor's office to host the Burlington Mayor's Show, which is a call-in program that happens every couple of months, where the mayor and Burlington partners can update the community on current events and initiatives. So that is the general report for Town Meeting TV programming. So in addition to the trustee's contract, funding is contributed to CCTV productions for additional Burlington meeting coverage. This funding expands coverage to approximately 60 other meetings and events. This has included things such as the TUC Committee, Police Commission, Public Works, and other executive press conferences. Some of the topics might have included an installation for tactile sign for blind and visually impaired park visitors, the city attorney appointment, Champlain Parkway Milestone with the opening of a new road segment, and the Champlain Street Park Grand Opening Celebration. So in total, between the trustee's budget and the additional city contribution, Burlingtonians received coverage of 221 meetings, events, press conferences, and also 91 community events. So now to discuss the funding. Town Meeting TV is funded in large part by the cable subscribers of Comcast and Burlington Telecom. Municipal contributions help to meet the increased demand for services and the decline in cable revenue. So this year, we are requesting three things. An FY26 Burlington municipal contribution of $29,172 for general Town Meeting TV operations, $17,530 to Town Meeting TV for ongoing support of hybrid meeting coverage of the MPAs each month, and $42,000 to CCTV productions for the additional Burlington meeting coverage. In total, this is $88,702. Lastly, so CCTV, we've been aware of the changes that affect Town Meeting TV's funding sources. I've been working to diversify revenue really since the early 2000s. Cable revenue has declined for Town Meeting TV nearly 20% over the last 10 years. In addition to cable revenue, Town Meeting TV is supported by CCTV Center for Media and Democracy through fundraising, grant development, fee-for-service work, and advocacy. So Town Meeting TV is a member of the Vermont Access Network, or VAN, a coalition of 23 public access centers across Vermont. This past legislative session, VAN received $1 million in base funding as a grant through the Secretary of State's office. We'll be working with VAN and the Secretary of State and the legislature to increase that to $2 million by FY28. We're also looking to expand our fee for service work through CCTV productions, providing support for municipalities for additional archiving and recording of meetings to meet the expanded open meeting law requirements of Act 133. And lastly, I want to make sure I thank our staff who are here on Monday nights with you all. Burlington, coverage is split between Steve and Andrew, who is here tonight, and just want to make sure I thank them for their contribution to local democracy and public engagement. This work can't be done without them. Unless Megan or Kevin, you have anything else to add, that's all I have.
Mainly happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much for being here. Could I get a full sense of the number of councillors that would like to speak on this item? Councillor Newbezer, councillor Grant, any other councillors? Because I am going to end the item at 12 minutes here, so. Okay, so councillor Newbezer, go ahead.
I just very briefly want to say thank you so much. I think I was very shocked, honestly, seeing your total budget and everything you do with that. And we often have conversations about investments that we could be making as a municipality and trying to sort of squeeze every dollar out of taxpayer funds, and clearly, you all are doing that in a variety of ways. So I really appreciate it, appreciate the role you play in preserving our democracy. Thank you.
I've been on the Town Meeting trustees for, I don't know, seven years or something between Burlington and Winuski. Every year, they get less funding from cable and somehow provide more coverage, and that has been consistently trending for like a decade. So, great job.
Thank you, councillor Newbezer.
A little painful, but yes.
Yes.
It's true.
Councillor Grant?
I have a question. So, a public safety committee is not actually on Town Meeting TV. Now, there was a period of time where it was because, just make a very, very long story, short as possible, when we were reviewing the consultants' reports, there were joint committees, there were work committees, and there was a decision made that those needed to be as public as possible. So they were broadcast when they were happening, and those were filmed, and then it just kind of dropped off. So the meetings are recorded. Is there a way we could get them put on your page? And then I will be discussing with the mayor, the possibility of, I don't know, we have to thoroughly look at what is there, if we can swap something else out, not that I want to offend anybody whose meeting's currently on there. But yeah, I was just wondering if we get you those links.
Yeah, so there are a couple of ways that we work with the public municipalities to ingest programming as well, and then distribute that through the channel, either literally the channel or the various platforms and channels that we use, because we know people come to us to look for content. And so I think this may be one of the reasons why CEO Shad, CAO Shad, wanted us to be here is, you know, we have spoken a lot with Scott Parker about how to work with the city, because we recognize that there's, you know, recording of meetings, meetings that are being done inside the city, put up on Civic Clerk, whether they're accessible or not, but the long and short of it is, yes, that can be done, but we can't just keep adding more to our archival storage and our distribution without compensation. So there is, we have different fee tiers for ingesting programming that we're not actually attending and recording ourselves.
Thank you, councillor Grant. Councillor Kane?
Thanks, I just want to thank you all. Your work really contributes to the strong sense of community here, and I'll say that I would not be a city councillor if it wasn't for your work. Just the accessibility of being able to explore and learn so much at your own pace about city affairs is just a tremendous asset. It's incredibly valuable, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kane. Any other councillor wish to get in the queue? Well, again, thank you very much for your patience and sticking with us this evening. I want to echo the comments made by councillor Kane and others. Deep gratitude and thanks for your team that we have here at all these meetings and all our other city events. And thank you, Kevin, for your representation of us on the board. I really appreciate your being here this evening. I suppose it's a question perhaps for you, CAO Shad. We had listed as a recommended action here, some of the asks here with respect to the budget, but my understanding is that we would see that through the course of developing our FY26 budget, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so there is no action item for tonight?
Nope.
But we will continue to stay in touch. And again, thank you very much for being here.
Thanks all, and thank you all for waiting. Thanks all, and thank you all for what you do, staying up so late.
Great. All right. So that takes us to item 10.3 now, the Police Chief's Report. And again, Chief, appreciate your being here late at night, and would ask you to come forward, I know we have your report that has been posted here. There's a new version of the report that was posted today. There are still some limited redactions in the report as it was posted for the public. And so Chief, as you're making your way to the table, I was going to first give the floor to City Attorney Brown to provide an explanation and a statement to that end.
Thank you, President Travers. So I want to publicly state that the city takes very seriously the duty to enter into good-faith bargaining negotiations with not only the BPOA, whose contract expires this year, as does the contract for the BFFA, and AFSMI and IBEW, whose contracts expire, excuse me, next year. There has been some back and forth with my office about proposed redactions to Chief Murad's report, because it's also my responsibility to make sure that the city's bargaining position isn't compromised by disclosure of certain information publicly. So I want to say that specifically with regard to the imminent BPOA contract negotiations, Chief Murad's report certainly may be informative, but I need to be clear that it's not binding on the bargaining team or on the city in its negotiation with the union. Through its bargaining team, the city will establish our formal proposals and positions to be used during the collective bargaining process, and the bargaining team will collect a broad range of information to develop those proposals. It is the duty of the executive branch of city government to negotiate the collective bargaining agreement with the union. We certainly hope and appreciate, hope that we will have and appreciate the support of the city council, and the city council is certainly welcome to present suggestions to the bargaining team at any time during the process. But again, I just want to reiterate that Chief Murad's report and any city council suggestions are not, should not be deemed the opinions or the positions of the bargaining team or binding on the bargaining team as it works with the union to successfully negotiate a new BPOA contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney Brown. And now, Chief, thank you very much for being here. Greatly appreciate the time and effort you put into the report that's posted for the council and for the public. Would certainly welcome a brief presentation for you. Also anticipate that there will be comments and questions from councilors here, and so we'll want to make sure we're leaving time for that. But the floor is yours, Chief.
Thank you very much, Council President, and thank you for having me here tonight. As I had expressed to you before, I don't really have a presentation aside from the report itself, and am happy to move forward from that. I think even in reading it, since I've, I was gracious, excuse me, I was grateful to you for allowing a version that updated the data through the end of the year. It irked me to have it only go through the Fourth of December, which was just strange from a data perspective, and got at my data OCD. This does go through the First of the Year and therefore covers all of 2024. I found one or two additional little data things, even after giving it to you earlier this week, sir, including the fact that even the timestamp at the bottom still has the former timestamp from the version that was submitted in December. But substantively, there is nothing that I would alter or change, and I still stand by what's in it and am happy to discuss it.
Well, thank you, Chief, and thank you for the updated report, and thank you for that brevity there. So I anticipate there are questions and comments from councilors. Could I get a sense as to those councilors that wish to get into the queue here? Okay. Well, someone's going to have to go first. So I do not have anyone in the queue at the moment. Counselor Grant?
Thank you. I have several comments. The first thing I want to start with is actually the survey from our Police Officers Union. I do continue to encourage people to take a look at it. I think there's some really important information here. I, it's very regretful that it wasn't something that was looked upon as being necessary to be public, that someone had to do a Freedom of Information Act in order to get the, act request in order to get the information. I believe that this survey needs to be used as part of the rebuilding of our department. Just a quick summary on some of the comments. We know that with regards to morale issues, there were many comments around the perception of how officers feel, the members of the city council view them. There is also concern about how the public views them as well. Many comments about the sick building, deferred maintenance issues, lack of care on the part of city, things like a lack of interview rooms, concerns related to keeping victims from having to hear or be exposed to an arrestee that may be related to the crime that occurred to them, training, hosting other departments for training. It was clear to me that wellness is not a priority. Some officers actually stated that. I think there's a wellness emergency in the department at this time. They're looking for emphasis on their health and professional development, depression, anxiety, a return to enforcing rules and directives, and bringing the entire department back to a professional standard of conduct and productivity. This starts to lead into some of the internal issues that are rarely talked about, and administration who listens to the officers laying the groundwork, their needs, and at least a perception that the three chiefs are capable of working together. There is no direction from the administration, and each supervisor is out just staying afloat each shift with apparently no support from the top. People employed by BPD, sworn and non-s sworn, don't feel fully supported by our administration. Many don't feel supported by entities outside of the building, police commission, city council. There is no direction from BPD. Many issues and suggestions get pushed aside and ignored. Better, more receptive leadership from the chiefs and the deputy chiefs. Very concerned about largely undertrained, younger officers being out on the street as we've lost more seasoned officers due to retirements and otherwise. Concerns that we need to do more for lateral transfers, concerns from the officers themselves about the lack of a recruiting and retention plan. Administration, as someone mentioned earlier, doing public forum. Administration supervisors treat some civilian staff like they're less than human and favor certain officers. Backdoor deals like scheduling have happened. Poor leadership, favoritism is shown, lack of accountability, some supervisors allowed to do whatever they want with no consequence, lack of adequate training, leading to poorly investigated incidents, lack of documentation, and case dismissals. How much time do I have left, please?
Point of order.
One minute.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on, there's a point of order, Counselor Grant. I've paused the clock.
I just wondered if we're talking about the chief's report.
I'm getting there. That's why I asked how much time I had. Thanks for the interpretation. I always appreciate them.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Grant. I think you can go ahead. You've indicated you're getting to the chief's report.
Thank you. So I just feel the reason I mentioned all these items from the internal survey is because they're not really handled in an honest fashion in the report, and they're crucial. They're crucial to the idea of developing a recruitment and retention plan. The obsession over the apology from the city council without the consideration of an apology to the public for the incidents that led up to the vote shows that there's no internal reflection of how we got where we got so that we can get ahead, move ahead, and get to a better place. Very disappointed in the lack of Vermont companies not being utilized in the making of videos or not being considered for digital advertising. We have people with skills in this city, and we should be using the money in this city whenever possible. And I'm deeply concerned about what has been hundreds of thousands of dollars not fully used, because again, there was no strategic plan for recruitment or retention or for addressing the online reputation that the department has. There's going to be a real issue for FY22. We have to look at the disparities between fire and police as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Grant. Are there any other councilors that wish to get in the queue at this time? And Chief Murad, I will say that at any point you want to be responsive, I don't know, there was no question there, but if you want to be responsive at any point, please just indicate, and the floor can be yours.
No, with regard to that survey, if anyone wants to watch the November Police Commission meeting, I basically regave the all-in that I'd given to all members of the department in August in response to that survey. And it was an internal survey created by the BPOA, not by the department. The reason it took FOIA to release it was because the union wished to hold on to it, and it was their product. That ultimately was determined not to be the case owing to the way in which it had been disseminated. But we addressed it internally in an elaborate and long all-in in August. I gave the exact same presentation to the public at a police commission meeting, and I think that too stands for itself.
Thank you, Chief. I see Counselor Litwin. Go ahead, Counselor Litwin.
Thank you so much. I'll be brief. Regarding that survey, I just wanted to make sure that I had been pulling out a lot from that survey. I've been looking at it for the past couple of months, and I think one of the number-one issues, frequency of concern was almost universally mentioned, were just that we need to increase staffing levels. Officers identified that they were overworked, burnt out, they had too much overtime due to the inadequate staffing, and the low numbers are exacerbating stress, it's hindering performance, and it's making shifts unsafe. And that was one of the most universally cited themes of that survey. Additionally, they wanted to develop incentives for retention, which we've been working on, reassess workload and operational models was often noted, overwhelmed by high call volumes, lack of adequate time to investigate thorough investigations, or even have community interactions. And so really, I'm looking forward to the next item on our agenda, because I think we can start to address some of these major issues here along with the ones that were already mentioned. And I did wonder if you had any recommendations that you wanted to share tonight that you didn't think were listed in the report, which was so thorough, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that question, Council President Travers. Most of the things that we've talked about are either in this report, or they're things that we've talked about before in previous examples of the budgets that were presented in FY23 and FY24. And there are any number of things that I too wish we had been able to get farther down the road on than we are currently, but I don't have any other sort of grand schematic ideas that are not contained in this. I do want to acknowledge, though, that I appreciate the recognition that that survey really does reflect the exhaustion of the men and women. I don't know how they do what they do, and I'm incredibly proud of them every single day to be able to work with them. Prior to 2020, no single officer had ever worked more than 200 Priority One incidents in a single year. And since 2020, in 2023 and in 2024, more than half of the officers currently on patrol have worked more than 200 Priority One incidents in a year, and all of the officers on patrol have worked more than 100. That is just an unimaginable increase, and it absolutely creates issues with wellness.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Counselor Litwin. I do not have any other councilors in the queue at the moment. Counselor Kane?
Thanks. I didn't support the commissioning of this report, believing we were inviting a politically-charged conversation that would make our work harder. So what do we get in this report? We learned that the chief believes that the defeat of Prop 7, an oversight effort, contributed to recruitment-retention issues, while conversely, we get no speculation as to how highly-publicized excessive-force lawsuits have impacted recruitment and retention. We see multiple references to SROs being removed from schools, including a request for an apology. We read that we should issue an official rejection of an officer cap that is not our officer cap. It's difficult to keep up with all of the strange requests in response to our request. Defund the police is mentioned a number of times, despite years of efforts to clarify intentions of the bipartisan effort, including by former Council President Paul, who is unequivocal that she and the city council never defunded the police. Meanwhile, we see no reflections on the net losses of sworn officers in the years leading into the so-called defunding, and no reflections on what the department might have been doing right between 2013 and 2016, the most recent years in which more officers joined than left the force. Yet 2020 is always used as the demarcation line in statistics presented, a strange point to use due to the pandemic, an event that is only mentioned once in passing. Reading and listening to the chief's work reminds me of attending Mass and listening to gospel, where everything revolves around the birth of Jesus Christ, and events are denoted before Christ and after death. Except in this case, the central event from which everything revolves is the bipartisan 2020 vote. I'm a professional statistician and former corporate consultant who used to put together reports like this, and let me just say, I spent a lot of time adjusting data for the pandemic, doing things like figuring out which months to exclude, how to adjust trends, looking at things, looking at empirical evidence for things like how the Black Lives Matter movement and the pandemic impacted departments around the country. Doing a 2020 before and after to draw conclusions about anything other than the pandemic would be a great example to use to teach my students what not to do. I see no analysis of the broad, well-documented industry-wide hiring and retention challenges that have plagued the police departments across the state and country since long before 2020. I would have liked to see information about the extent to which this is a national issue, Vermont data, county data, data from comparable towns, other than for salaries. We also get a play-by-play of the chief's annual estimates for the change in headcount versus actuals without a walkthrough of the methodology. While I appreciate the annual retirement projections, it would have been valuable to see tenure eligibility data from before the pandemic. The data presented is difficult to interpret without context for moving parts such as the background rate of retirement and non-retirement departures. I see no methodological justification for the basis for which hundreds of thousands of recruitment funds have been allocated or being tracked for effectiveness. We read that the chief decided not to use a quarter of a million dollars in recruitment dollars in FY23, which ultimately went to sign-on bonuses, but we don't learn how the chief arrived at the amount per officer. There should be an evidence-based and easily-accessible record of the decision-making process that could be referenced for things like that, the New York Post ads or social media, which I understand the department was recently locked out of. For instance, do we think the Horizon Visual Media recruitment video was effective? Were there considerations for making the video or future recruitment videos in-house, as I understand the fire department does, on a negligible budget? What is the thought process behind the new recruitment website? Was the website previously considered? It would inspire confidence to get a sense that the sequencing of the expenditures was thoughtful, and why and how much we expect the newest efforts to help. Beyond data, what are the specific strategies from innovative departments? What are the smartest chiefs doing? I see that our chief has taken the liberty of assigning an officer to take over for Corporal Irwin as our recruiter. That seems like a crucial decision to get things turned around. I think the public will be disappointed to know that he chose an officer named in an active use-of-force lawsuit. Probably should have run that one by the mayor, as I doubt he's the first name. We want prospective recruits to Google. To conclude, if dialogue around some sort of repudiation of the policy decisions of our predecessors is so important to officer morale, as opposed to him personally, I think it would have been good, it would have been more effective to take a less combative approach here and elsewhere, perhaps starting by acknowledging that a lot of well-intentioned and thoughtful work has gone into modernizing policing in this city. The discussion of non-s sworn personnel raises questions in my mind about whether the chief understands why they exist, or let alone why the cap exists. He makes it clear that they do not have an extent, they do not to any extent, non-s sworn officers do not to any extent replace or lighten sworn officer duties or impact his recommended sworn officer cap of 105, which drops out of a hat. It's very strange to be asked for apologies for our predecessors' behavior. It's very strange to be asked for apologies for our predecessors' behavior by someone who, as far as I know, is not being asked to apologize for his predecessors' behavior, for instance, the multiple social media scandals, and by someone who has demonstrated no capacity to apologize for his own behavior. Instead, we get a lot of lessons for how people outside the police department should behave, including suggestions that the state should require the city to spend a certain portion of its budget on policing. Our chief, who has been handed blank checks during budget, I'm wrapping up.
Point of inquiry. Point of inquiry.
During budgeting for several years running.
Excuse me, point of inquiry.
On top of an officer court, an officer court with the strongest contract in the region, believes he is a victim. So lastly, let me just say.
Point of order.
Since evidently you need to hear this.
Point of order. Counselor Kane is continuing to speak.
Nobody is out to get you. And in fact, it's clear to me that everyone on this side of the table wants to make sworn officer work lighter, better supported, and more attractive. Thank you.
Okay. I would have permitted you an opportunity to finish without interruption. There was an interruption though. Counselor Littwen, I could not hear you over the elevated voices in here. What was your comment, Counselor Littwen?
I had a point of inquiry for the speaker, but he spent so much time over, I'm not sure it's worth asking.
Okay. Okay. I don't know that a point of inquiry would have even been in order there. So I would appreciate it if councilors would be permitted the opportunity here moving forward, absent, you know, points of order that happened before that are in order, to allow them to finish their comments. So thank you, Counselor Kane. I do not have any other councilors in queue at the moment.
Counsel President, if I may.
Yes. So we'll go to Counsel Barlow, but first you, Chief.
I think that calling out an officer for lawful actions that were not adjudicated as improper and basically putting that officer into a position of public opprobrium is exactly the kind of issue that we have with regard to whether or not these officers feel supported.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel Barlow, you're the next in queue.
Excuse me, can I just tell the time? It's past 10:30.
I understand. My understanding under the rules is that if there's no vote, once we've started an item, we can at least finish the item. Is that correct, City Attorney Brown?
I trust your interpretation of that. I just, my experience before, you've always.
Is that we turn to pumpkins at 10:30?
Taken the motion at 10:30. So I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, that we didn't need to do that at this point. But, thank you.
Well, absent objection, we will complete this item and then at that point in time, a motion to suspend our rules would be entertained. So we will proceed to complete this item. And Counselor Barlow, you were next in queue.
Thank you, President Travers. And thank you for your work on this report, Chief. I think it will be an important document in the recruitment and retention conversation as we move forward. And it's not lost on me that the criticisms of you and your report, like the ones I've read by some of my colleagues on Front Porch Forum, and like the ones we're hearing tonight, are emblematic of what you call the single biggest recruitment challenge in your report, which is the support, either perceived or actual, by city government. So I also want to say, and I missed doing so last Thursday on Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and since you won't be presenting to us again before your departure, I just want to thank you for your service to the community. We've been lucky to have you at the helm these last challenging few years, and I appreciate you staying the course and leading the department when the city is needed, and you and the department to do so much with so few resources. So, thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Barlow. Are there any other councilors that wish to get into the queue at this point? We'll go to Counselor Newbezer and then Counselor Bergman. Okay. We'll go to Counselor Newbezer. Okay. I understood. We'll go to Counselor Newbezer.
Thank you, Council President. When I ran, I said that I would focus on taking the politics out of public safety. And to that end, I voted to appoint you, while being honest about my concerns around a lack of collaboration in the past with members of this body and in other instances. My hope was that I was going to see substantial changes in those trends moving forward, but I feel that this report does not reflect that. It represents the opposite. There's a lot that I could say about this report, my frustration with how it came about and how it was delivered, but I want to focus on the impact on taxpayers and focus on their best interests for a moment. We asked for solutions that were realistic and achievable, yet this report provides proposals that have not been properly vetted, properly priced, ranked by priority, or put in this year's budget context and the reality facing many property taxpayers. And I quote from the report, "Responding to this resolution raises challenging questions about funding for which this report does not provide a solution." The one main takeaway I did soak up is that, and I quote with few exceptions, "Each proposal for how to address our staffing crisis boils down to money," seemingly more money. So let's take a moment to talk about money and the reality of our budget and what myself and progressives have already done to move a large amount of funding over the last few years to BPD in a very short time, these last nine months, but also before the current administration. When I ran for office, I was told that we had a $7 to $9 million deficit, but turns out, as I got more information and got into office, that number was actually closer to 14 million. Last year, we passed a budget unanimously that closed that massive deficit, a big feat, given our $100 million, just north of $100 million general fund, all while increasing the budget of BPD by a larger amount in a single fiscal year than in any year under the previous administration. Additionally, progressives and members of this council have supported an additional $100,000 for BPD to spend on recruitment on top of the $250,000 already allocated, also supported extending overtime opportunities to officers downtown and growing and maintaining additional supports like the CRT program, pilot program. So if the solution is to throw more money, is essentially what's being posed at this report, I think it is incumbent on this body to analyze how the money we have spent, how that's actually been used. According to the report, as I just stated, the BPD's budget for recruitment was $250,000 in FY23 and '24. During that time period, we hired 11 officers. During the same time period, our fire department hired 11 firefighters. Their recruitment budget was $3,750. Not 300,000, 3,000. Both struggling to hire, different contexts, but one notably has leadership that is working collaboratively to create better working conditions for rank and file, that works collaboratively with this body and works collaboratively with our current mayor. Another example, BPD spent $40,000 of their recruitment budget, according to this report, to pay an out-of-state company to produce some online recruitment videos. The fire department produced an effective video, which we all praised in the last few months on the floor of this body that Chief LeChant showed us. They did that for the cost of some staff time. Let's do another, because I still have a minute here. The city council allocated on top of the $250,000, an extra $100,000 for recruitment efforts, and the BPD will be, quote, according to this report, "Using a majority of that for social media advertising campaign and a new website." Now, I, call me naive, I do communications work through my consulting business, and I will say that it should not cost that much money by even, shouldn't call it a fraction of that much money to do the described task well. I know because I've done it in my professional life successfully. I deeply respect, and there's more I want to say, but I'm running out of time, I deeply respect and want to highlight my support for rank and file officers for this department. We are understaffed. My colleague, Counselor Grant, highlighted the deep problems facing rank and file officers. And I have been committed from day one and I will continue to be committed to supporting those officers and carrying out the business of this city and keeping our city safe. They are a vital component to our public safety system, but they are a component of our public safety system, and we have to take a holistic approach. And that starts with collaboration on this body and in city government. It does not start by politicizing the top issue of every voter across, every neighborhood, across every political party. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McKnight, and then Counselor Bergman.
Thank you, President Travers. And thank you, Chief, for being here tonight and for this really comprehensive report. I also echo Counselor Barlow's comments, thanking you for all your service to the city. And particularly, I wanted to thank you because as a new counselor, in many ways, you don't know what to expect. And I knew what a busy man you were, starting out on the council and didn't really know how much of an opportunity I would have to even reach you, to work together, but I've been so overwhelmingly impressed with your prompt responses to communications, to questions, your willingness to get on the phone at a moment's notice, your collaborative approach, your willingness to talk things over when we have disagreement, which we have had a few back and forths. And it's always been a very productive and professional experience having those conversations. And it has even included an apology or two between us on both sides because that's how productive conversation goes. And so thank you for that. I also want to give appreciation for the collaboration you did with the rank and file officers that you lead to come up with the ideas that are in this report. Because as others have mentioned, that type of input is critical to our ability to rebuild the police department. And from our conversations and other communication you've put out, I understand that many of the ideas here came, they're not your ideas, they came from the rank and file officers, which is so important. I was personally frustrated to hear, though, that you had shared many of these ideas with the administration back over the summer, but we still have not seen any action or even encouragement to your department to take action on.
Point of order.
Ideas to bolster recruitment in the department.
Excuse me. Counselor McKnight, I'm going to pause your timer here for a moment. There is a point of order.
I wonder if the comments just stated aren't personalized, which would be against council rules.
I said the administration. I don't believe that's personalized.
I'm not, I mean, councilors are permitted to, I mean, as long as it's not sort of impugning the individual motives of other councilors, councilors are permitted to be critical of one another's positions, including the mayor's position on items. So the point of order is not in order, and Counselor McKnight, you may continue.
Thank you very much. I also love to look at data and do so in my work. Seems like we have a lot of us here at the table who do that, which is great. I was particularly interested, as a person who analyzes surveys for a living, in the chart that you provided on page 34, which is a summary of the data of the ratings that officers gave for leaving, that officers gave after leaving. So first, in my analysis, I always look at the things that are rated the highest and then the things that are rated the lowest, just to get a sense of what the, you know, what the positives and the negatives are. And so in this chart, two lines stood out to me, worth mentioning. First was the line for supervision received. And on that one, 97% of the respondents ranked their supervision received as a satisfied or above. So that, on that, I wanted to commend you and your supervisory team because that is an extremely high ranking for anyone to give their boss at any level. I know you're not the only supervisor, obviously, in the department, and that credit goes to many other officers beyond yourself. And then I also wanted to note the lowest ranking, which falls under the city's commitment to its employees. On that one, unfortunately, 74% of officers said that they were not satisfied with the city's commitment to employees. And you mentioned this already a little bit, but I'm just wondering if you could speak to some of the negative comments that we've heard here already tonight and vocal criticism of the department. Do you believe that those fall into the category of actions that drive that number down and make it such a large negative rating?
I think that the men and women who do this work on behalf of all of us and our neighbors, they want to be supported and appreciated. I think they want to have a sense of, a sense of the benefit of the doubt when they do the work that they do. They know that they have to be held accountable and they know that they have to be always striving to be better. But I do think that they also expect that when they do things properly and when they do things lawfully, that they are going to have support. And I think that for the people exiting the department over the past several years, and that is what those markers are, they are a different survey than the one that was conducted by the BPOA. These are surveys of officers who are leaving. They say that they are leaving because they do not feel that they are getting that kind of support.
Okay. Thank you. And then one follow-up question there. Do you feel that the resolution we have next on our agenda takes action to improve this score in the future?
Point of order.
You are at time, Counselor McKnight, so we'll pause with that question. There is a point of order.
The question applies to another resolution we're going to speak about explicitly next and not to the report given.
I believe the question to the chief is in order. Whether or not he's able to answer it or not is fine, but the chief is here to speak about a report that addresses recruitment and retention challenges, among other things. And the question is whether or not particular future actions of the council may, from his perspective, address those challenges as outlined in the report. So I think the question is in order, but you are at time, Counselor McKnight. Chief, I'll turn to you if you recall the question and can answer it.
Yes. As I say, the report does suggest that a recognition that the decision made in 2020 was not in the best interest of the police department, an explicit recognition would be beneficial to retention and to the people who are inside the agency. And to that extent, yes, I think that the resolution that follows does make that suggestion.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Counselor McKnight. Counselor Bergman?
First, thank you for your service. Regardless of any disagreements that you and I have had, including not welcoming input and questions, I recognize and acknowledge the hard work, the very hard work, that being police chief entails. And I appreciate that. I need to follow up by saying that I greatly appreciate the work of the men and women of the BPD. They're working in very trying times with national problems as well, you know, that are local problems like substance use and mental health crises, an explosion of homeless people in our city center, and the concerning level of shoplifting and other crimes, all happening at the same time. And they are working with numbers that are well below the authorized cap, and that is just a very stressful environment. I worked with and for officers and command staffs of the BPD as the ordinance enforcement assistant city attorney of the city for 20 years, trying my best to support your efforts and our efforts. And supporting the recruitment and retention of enough officers to do what we need is something that I have done since I came back to this council in 2022 and I will continue to do. While I think there are some good things in this report, I am concerned that it's not responsive to the resolution, what the resolution asked for. And I think, in response to what I've heard, that tonight, it is unfair to say that criticism equates to a lack of support and that the administration has not acted on recommendations. We've gotten detailed reports from the mayor on her actions and she's been incredibly focused on this issue. I hope that she'll have the opportunity to respond to that criticism. Getting to some details, I am concerned that the unredacted version contained information with specific proposals related to the upcoming contract and that was shared with the union before sharing them with management's bargaining team. This, in my opinion, undermines and negatively impacts the city's position in bargaining. Second, I don't think that the report provides the comprehensive assessment of recruitment hurdles we asked for in the resolution and that we need, despite there being some interest. hurdles we asked for in the resolution and that we need, despite there being some interesting ideas for us to explore. Without getting into granular details, I'm disappointed by the lack of responsiveness on areas the resolution asked for, such as the roles filled by active-duty officers relative to current staffing levels, the recommendation on the number of CSOs, CSLs, and other complementary staffs, in addition to the recommendation on sworn officers, the assessment on administrative help needed to relieve officers of a workload, the information related to bonuses that assess the impact on hiring and provides a market comparison, and the steps the city can take to encourage alternative training models at the police academy. How many minutes or seconds do I have left? If you could just not take this away.
A minute and a half.
A minute and a half. I am most troubled by what I consider to be a political attack. The sign, it's a clear sign, the clear sign of this is in the so-called background section on pages three and four, which blame the city council for the staffing problems while ignoring Vermont's and the nation's policing staff problems and minimizing the internal problems causing officers to retire or resign at an accelerated rate. A person will reasonably think that the only reason there was such an attrition rate was because of the lower cap, but this would be unreasonable because the background section does not analyze or assess the rapid attrition. It merely lists selective facts and jumps to a conclusion or an opinion. The same thing's true on pages five through seven, which clearly make the reduction in the size of the force. The sole cause, not a cause, but the sole cause of the increase in incidents. This is not helpful. We know the impact of the pandemic, the homeless problem, poverty, substance use, mental health issues, and the significant lack of state programs are drivers of the shoplifting and other incidents. Ignoring these factors shows this is not the assessment that we need and that we can rely on. This is not to say that we don't need a larger force, one that complements all of the building we've done on Cape. No one on the council has said that we don't need more officers since I was elected in 2022. Our actions to raise the cap and increase the budget significantly prove this. But the drumbeat of criticism around attrition is not, in my opinion, helpful to solving this problem. It just doubles down on the problem, beating up a straw man. Ours is a great community, and we need to lift it up. And I know I'm pushing the time limit, and I have a few more things, but I will just stop there.
Thank you, Counselor Bergman. Are there any other counselors that wish to be recognized on this item? Counselor Shannon?
Thank you, Chief. We gave you a rather substantial assignment, along with all the other work that you are doing to manage a severely depleted department that is doing great work for our city. And I too believe that this is a great city, and we need to lift her up as we need to lift up your department. And I hear that certainly said on campaign trails, certainly said on Front Porch Forum, and much of what I heard tonight, I do not think lifted up your department. And I appreciate that much of your, we asked that your report engage with the BPOA, with the Police Officers Union, with the rank-and-file police officers. And much of the narrative and recommendations in the report is reflective of engaging with To be clear, we did not ask you to cost anything out. That was not part of our request. And it's understandable that in the union negotiation process, that is going to be necessary to determine what we can do, what the priorities for the union is, what's affordable to us. That will all be part of those union discussions. But there were many things in this report that were of no cost, and they seem to be the things that are most objectionable to some counselors and the most hurtful to the In the resolution that follows, we will talk about some of those things that we can do. But I don't feel that it is fair to attack the messenger for sharing what you hear in the department. And the idea that it costs more money to hire police officers than it costs to hire firefighters is, that has been true for as long as I have been on the council, 22 years. And it's more true post-2020 in any department in the country. So I want to just recognize that. This report is almost 70 pages long. It's extremely thorough. Is there more that could be added? I am sure that there is. And I'm sure that there are ideas around the table about positive things that we can all engage in. But I would like to think that the very first and cheapest positive thing that we can all engage in is saying thank you to you, thank you to your officers, thank you for protecting our community and the work that you do, that there is no human out there who will do the kind of work that you do, pass judgment in very intense situations and not make mistakes sometimes. And we have to recognize that humanity. We do need to take care of officer wellness. And it's extraordinarily difficult to take care of officer wellness, which is a complaint of the officers, fairly. But it's hard to do that when we're asking them to cover the shifts that we have to cover. So I found this report to be very, very informative. I appreciate the appendices that you put in to back, you know, back up what's in the report and give us more clarity on where things are coming from. And I thank you. I do think that you went through the questions that we asked in the resolution, and you were responsive to those questions we asked you to respond to.
Thank you, Counselor Shannon. Is there any other counselor that has not spoken on this item that wishes to? Mayor, we'll go to you, and then I suspect you'll have the last word around this table, and then Chief would be happy to have any parting words from you. So, Mayor?
Thank you. I want to bring the council and the public's attention to my memo on this agenda item. And I took great care to offer my reflection and the voice of the mayor on this particular memo offered to you as a response to your September resolution. I want to be very clear that I respectfully cannot endorse this report for a number of reasons. The city attorney addressed one of them regarding the impact on our bargaining position as we not only embark within a matter of less than a month, our bargaining with BPOA, but the bargaining with also BFFA, and then next year, ASME, which is our largest bargaining unit. And I communicated these concerns very carefully and diligently to the chief when he first presented this long memo to me at very early hours and very late hours in a day when I wasn't even in town to offer a more collaborative approach to this. And I am disappointed at that. I'm disappointed because the majority of my concerns remain and were not incorporated in this memo. And I hope and expect that department heads for this city work in a collaborative way and manner with the mayor. It is an important and critical relationship. And ironically enough, I was at the mayor's conference at the time for which we were going back and forth on this memo, and another police chief at that particular conference said the most important relationship is the one between the mayor and the chief of police. So I take this very seriously, that I decided it was important enough to go on record about the importance of this mayor not being able to endorse this particular memo, and this is why. The impact on bargaining cannot be understated when we want to be committed to building an affordable city. I have been very transparent from the day I became mayor of this city around the structural challenges facing our city in terms of our budget, our general fund budget, which funds our police department and our fire department, for that matter. I shared my concerns around the over-promising nature of listing so many bargaining items. These are all subjects of bargaining within this document. And these are subjects of bargaining, which is why the mayor and the administration do not take action on this, because this is a matter you have to bargain with your bargaining unit when you have unions as an employer. I think this not only diminishes our bargaining stance with the BPOA, to which the chief decided to share the full report before he shared it with me, with the BPOA, but I think it complicates further negotiations with the BFFA as well. I want to be very clear. I've spent the bulk of my career in the actual labor movement, on the side of labor, as a labor organizer with the largest union in the state of Vermont. And I stand ready to bargain, but I do so in good faith, making sure we do not over-promise our financial situation and distract ourselves from what it really is going to take to rebuild our police department. That takes trust. It takes good faith in what we're able to offer at the bargaining table. It takes our ability to be flexible, to be able to prioritize our bargaining positions, and for us as management to have ourselves organized as a team, to put our best foot forward. It does no favors to our union for folks who are in the rank-and-file and folks to come when we are not organized ourselves as being clear what we can afford and what our priorities are. So I ask the council to be better partners with this administration as we prepare for bargaining, not only for the BPOA, but in the future for BFFA and our other unions. We owe that to the rank-and-file staff who work for this city day in and day out. I also do not think that this report is the kind of report that should be owed to the city council because it does not effectively assess the actual recruitment work for which we are doing. What is working? What should be improved? What recruitment strategies and outcomes are meeting the mark, what are not? When I was a legislator not too long ago, I relied heavily on professional staff within the legislative council and otherwise within state government to provide research, data-rich reports to make policy decisions. And lacking such, I felt very uncomfortable to endorse any policy solutions. This is a critical element of any legislative body for which the council is. The chief's report does not meet that mark. And this is why I plan to commission an expert assessment from my office to give you a data-informed analysis and to give myself, as the mayor, a better set of recommendations on what we can be doing better with our limited resources to recruit and retain rank-and-file officers in our police department. And as a starting point, I also provided on Civic Clerk a beginning analysis, a little taste, if you will, from Nancy Stetson, our senior policy and data analyst. It's a part of a presentation she prepared for the Bloomberg Philanthropies organization that came to the city of Burlington a couple weeks ago to help the city be considered for certification for a what works city, which is a city that is driven by data and evidence to make decisions and to assess ourselves to make sure we're headed in the right direction. I have already asked, and the council president has agreed, to provide a more in-depth database session with Nancy Stetson on January 27th to drill deeper into our recruitment trends, our retention trends. And to me, this is the kind of greater detail work that starts to give you the trends and the data that you deserve as the legislative body of city government here to make better-informed decisions. I truly believe and know that when we work collaboratively and not one person's opinion on what is working or not in the city, we can get better results and have better outcomes for the decisions you're being asked to make. And finally, the fact that I can't endorse this particular report in no way changes my commitment to rebuilding the Burlington Police Department and to truly help address the recruitment challenges and low morale that is within the department. I have gone out of my way and will continue to do so to build relationships with the rank-and-file, going on ride-alongs, showing up in the building, baking cookies, showing up in every way, shape, and form, because I'm committed to those relationships with all of the individuals putting themselves out there in very hard positions, protecting our community and showing up and dealing with a crushing workload day in, day out. However, at the end of the day, again, we have to be fiscally responsible in all of our decisions and in good faith be prepared to negotiate with the same employees who are asking that of us. And finally, to the point of lack of action, it is simply not accurate, and I don't think that gets us to the place we need to be as leaders of this city. We need to be truly committed to working together, be focused on rebuilding the police department, not accusing each other of not taking action when it's simply not true. My record stands for it. I update you all on community safety issues every single meeting. I'm not even going to go further into detail because it's all on record. I'm here to stand as a partner with the city council, with the chief of police, the new chief of police, to move this city forward on behalf of the rank-and-file who are working at the Burlington Police Department. And I know we can do better, so let's do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, there are no other counselors in the queue. So I appreciate your being here this evening and happy to give the last word to you.
Well, thank you for that. I wanted to share, on September 9th, when we had the meeting that engendered this report, where our city council met and discussed four resolutions around public safety, and also ultimately tasked me with creating this report, I did my best to meet its needs and what I saw as the request. I sent a note to the men and women inside the department, to all the employees of the department, about the four resolutions that were related to public safety and could mean a lot to the BPD. The evening began with a longish public comment session. There were nearly three dozen speakers. Most speakers were commenting on the public safety resolutions, and almost all of those were speaking in favor of them. They used words and phrases like "support," "value," "deeply appreciative." They said things like, "We need to make it abundantly clear that Burlington is not a place where anything goes." They were asking for, even pleading for, more police and good policing. There were aspects of the comments that hurt to hear. "I don't like knowing that we're not able to deliver everything we once did, everything our neighbors need, and everything we want to deliver." Some speakers talked about how they feel unsafe, how their children are frightened to use our wonderful public library. There were laments about the situation on the marketplace and in the parks and on the streets and in people's yards. But the comments that were hard to hear were not accusations about the work you, the men and women of this department, do. They recognized how hard you work and how amazing it is that you have done so much with so little. I then discussed the results of the discussion about those resolutions. Two were approved, one was, two were moved on, the assignment that came to me. And then I said, "But another thing that was important came after public comment but before the deliberations. It had to do with a resolution recognizing the Burlington American 10- to 12-year-old Little League Baseball All-Stars, who won the Vermont State Championship in July and then represented Vermont in the New England Regional Tournament, and was an experience not unlike the wonderful one tonight with the soccer team. I loved seeing that team of kids in their home game uniforms, some still marked by grass stains, and getting a standing ovation from everyone in Contoys. They were beaming. It was a reminder. It's worth remembering that we should be proud of these kids, but also of this town. This weekend saw a really successful art hop and a fabulous Pride March. And the weekend began with a terrific event on Thursday when Peter Berenberg and the Bagel Cafe sponsored Creamy with a Cop after working with Sarah Tim and Shannon. It had been a while since we did something like that, not since 2019, in fact, but it was wonderful, and I think cops and supervisors who attended would agree. There were a lot of regular folks there, too, connecting with officers in a way that we haven't been able to do as much of over the past few years. From Little League teams to art hop, from Pride to Creamy with a Cop, these things are what make a city a place worth saving and serving. We've been through hard times. There will be hard times ahead, but there are good times, too, and great teammates. We are overworked and understaffed, but the work matters and your job counts, and that's worth remembering, too."
Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate all the time and effort you put into this report. I will also echo the thanks expressed by many people here for your service to the city. I don't know if we'll have another opportunity for you to come before the council, before your service for the city ends. We will see. Certainly, you will be welcome, but in case not, would like to extend our thanks and gratitude to you and to the men and women of the department.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that brings us now to the end of item 10.4, and I will note the time, 11:10 p.m. Counselor Barlow, yes?
Thank you, President Travers. I'd like to move to suspend our rules to complete item number 10.6 on our agenda.
Counselor Barlow has moved to suspend our rules just to complete item 10.6, resolution authorization for inter-fund loan for Department of Public Works Board of Finance. It's a second from Counselor Bergman. Is there any discussion on that motion? Again, to reaffirm here, the motion is to suspend our rules solely to complete item 10.6, resolution authorization for inter-fund loan for Department of Public Works and no other items on our agenda. Are there any questions or comments on that motion before we vote? Counselor Bergman?
Can I ask for a three-minute recess for? Is it debatable?
A motion to suspend our rules? I believe a motion to suspend our rules is debatable. City Attorney Brown?
No, he is not.
A motion to suspend our rules is not debatable.
When folks are not using their microphones...
Excuse me, Counselor Litwin, sorry.
Okay, I can't hear any of the discussion, so point of order.
Yeah, all right.
If people do not use their microphones, I can't hear what people are saying at all.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. I am just asking for a brief, and I said three minutes, recess so that we, I can confer on this question, that I seconded, by the way.
Okay. I just have two questions for the city attorney. City Attorney Brown, when we reach a motion to suspend the rules like this, to confirm, is that motion debatable?
Motion to suspend rules needs a second, debate is not allowed, it cannot be amended, and it needs two-thirds vote to pass of the people who are present and voting.
Okay, thank you. So my follow-up question is, there's a motion pending right now. It was made by Counselor Barlow and seconded by Counselor Bergman. While that motion is pending prior to a vote, is a, is a motion to place the council on recess in order?
So, that's not, I mean, it's not a motion to amend. It seems to me that the first motion has to be resolved first, the motion to suspend the rules.
Okay. So, the, the request for a recess is a motion. So Counselor Bergman has moved to recess for three minutes, that motion is in order. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Counselor Newbezer.
Point of order.
Excuse me, the city attorney?
That's what this, she said. So, a motion, I mean, what I said is my, my, yes. So there is a, a motion pending that had been seconded. And so, I, what I said is that I think the motion to suspend needs to be resolved, it's not...
Okay, all right, understood. I misheard that. So Counsel, Counselor Bergman, we've, the, the motion on the floor, it needs to be resolved before we would recess, so unfortunately, a motion to recess would not be in order at this point in time. So we do need to take a vote then on the motion to suspend our rules, which is not debatable. I will also flag that, that we did warn a meeting for the city council with mayor presiding this evening that we will still have to turn to even, even after this item, because it was, was warned, and I think we can't simply ignore the meeting. So, the motion made by Counselor Barlow, seconded by Counselor Bergman, is to suspend our rules solely to hear item 10.6. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No.
Aye.
Okay. Because Counsel Litwin is online, we will need a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Bergman?
Hoping to have a second vote, the answer is no.
Counselor Broderick?
No.
Counselor Carpenter?
Yes.
Counselor Grant?
No.
Counselor Kane?
No.
Counselor Litwin?
Yes.
Counselor McKnight?
Yes.
Counselor Newbezer?
No.
Counselor Shannon?
Yes.
City Council President Travers? Six ayes, five nays.
So requiring two-thirds with six yeses and five nos, that motion fails. Counselor Bergman?
Yes, what, am I, yeah, for Counselor Litwin. So I would move to suspend the rules and take up, looks like item 10.5 and 10.6. Is that correct? That would be the two DPW matters.
Okay.
The water resources and the one that we, the interloan fund.
Thank you, Counselor Bergman. Is there a second to that motion?
Could I offer a potentially friendly amendment?
No.
No.
No, I can't.
Second by Counselor Broderick. That is not amendable, so we will now go to a vote on Counselor Bergman's motion to suspend the rules to complete our meeting by taking up items 10.5 and 10.6. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
The clerk will please call a roll.
Counselor Barlow?
No.
Counselor Bergman?
Yes.
Counselor Broderick?
Yes.
Counselor Carpenter?
Can you clarify which two items?
Item 10.5, the Water Resources Bond Request Update, and item 10.6, Resolution Authorization for Interfund Loan for Department of Public Works. Those would be the two items we would complete this evening.
Counselor Grant? Counselor Kane?
Yes.
Counselor Litwin?
No.
Counselor McKnight?
No.
Counselor Newbezer?
No.
Counselor Shannon?
No.
City Council President Travers? Six ayes, five nays.
Requiring two-thirds, six yeses, five nos, the motion fails.
Can I make a motion?
President Travers, may I?
Yes, Counselor Shannon.
I would move to reconsider our first vote, the prior, the prior vote. I would move to reconsider, I think I can do that.
Point of order, only if somebody who voted in the prevailing side...
I did vote.
Excuse me, it can't be reconsidered at all.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, City Attorney Brown.
Counsel President?
Counselor Newbezer, yes?
I'd like to move that we suspend our rules to complete our deliberative agenda, and then obviously we'd have to go to the, the mayor presiding meeting after that.
Counselor Newbezer has moved to suspend our rules to complete the entire deliberative agenda. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Counselor Bergman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No. No.
All right, the clerk will please call the roll. I, I will note, that it does seem a little counterintuitive that we're spending so much time on all these votes, but the clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Barlow?
No.
Counselor Bergman?
Yes.
Counselor Broderick?
No.
Counselor Grant?
Yes.
Counselor Kane?
Yes.
Counselor Litwin?
No.
Counselor McKnight?
No.
Counselor Newbezer?
Yes.
Counselor Shannon?
No.
City Council President Travers? Five ayes, six nays.
So, again, without two-thirds, the motion fails.
I'd like to make a motion, to make a motion.
Counselor McKnight, the floor is yours.
I move to end the meeting.
Well, we are at the end of the meeting. I will, I, I will just note that I think it's unfortunate, I, I know that we've had Director Spencer here this evening, still here, and I, I think it's unfortunate that we can't turn to that item, which I believe may have some time sensitivity here, but since all motions to suspend our rules have failed, it is my obligation to now adjourn the meeting of the city council at 11:21 PM.
Counsel President? Could I make an additional motion, which hasn't been made, to suspend our rules?
Point of order, I just, I made a motion that was not recognized.
Well, okay. There is a motion to adj, I mean, this is getting ridiculous, folks. There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Counselor Litwin. Does a motion to adjourn require a majority, I'm assuming, City Attorney Brown?
Motion to adjourn? Oh my gosh.
Point of information, how do you adjourn a meeting that's already over?
To adjourn the meeting?
Excuse me.
Needs a second, no debate allowed, cannot be amended, requires majority, cannot be reconsidered.
Okay. So there's a, there's a motion to adjourn. Prior, prior to my getting to the adjournment, Counselor McKnight had the floor, made a motion to adjourn, it has been seconded by Counselor Litwin. All in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
No.
No.
The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Barlow?
No.
Counselor Bergman?
No.
Counselor Broderick?
No.
Counselor Carpenter?
No.
Counselor Grant?
No.
Counselor Kane?
No.
Counselor Litwin?
Yes.
Counselor McKnight?
Yes.
Counselor Newbezer?
No.
Counselor Shannon?
Yes.
City Council President Travers?
No.
Three ayes, eight nays.
We are not adjourned, with three in the yes and, and eight against, the motion fails. So Counselor Newbezer, you're, you'll have the last crack at a motion and then we won't take any further after this. So Counselor Newbezer?
With the hope to make sure that we're respecting city staff time and moving forward items that we need to move forward to get onto the ballot, and I would suspect is good governance and avoiding deliberative item four, which I guess we don't want to talk about tonight, I will move that we suspend our rules to complete items 10.5, six and seven, which are what city workers have been waiting here to present on. I recognize that seven is a general fund update, which I don't know if their city workers are not here to present on, but that is the only option that could loop in both five and six that hasn't yet been presented.
Okay. There's a motion on the table to suspend our rules to complete our deliberative agenda with items 10.5, six and seven. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Bergman. The clerk will please call the roll on that motion.
Counselor Barlow?
I'm sorry, no.
Counselor Bergman?
Yes.
Counselor Broderick?
Yes.
Counselor Carpenter?
Yes.
Counselor Grant?
Yes.
Counselor Kane?
Yes.
Counselor Litwin?
No.
Counselor McKnight?
No.
Counselor Newbezer?
Yes.
Counselor Shannon?
No.
City Council President Travers? Seven ayes, four nays.
Okay, with seven in the affirmative and four against, that has the two-thirds majority necessary for us to complete items 10.5, 10.6 and 10.7. Director Spencer, you are here on items 10.5 and 10.6. I, I will note before Director Spencer comes up here that DPW had actually initially requested that item 10.5 be on our consent agenda and for councillors to review just the materials that had been posted, so I'm anticipating that item 10.5, the Water Resources Bond Request Update, probably does not require much of a presentation from you, Director Spencer, but did want to provide councillors an opportunity to ask any questions if they had them at this stage.
Yes, correct. I will save my comments and turn to Division Director Megan Moyer to add any input and context before answering questions.
Hello, Megan.
Yes, I'm going to apologize in advance, I have many fun animations that I've added over the course of this meeting, just kidding. We just wanted to quickly come to you all and make sure that you are aware of our responsiveness to your comments and the community's comments in particular. Early on, over the course of the updates we've given you, we had been focusing on trying to bring forward a bond request that involved these items highlighted in yellow. And as a result of your feedback, particularly the feedback on December 16th, we're now bringing forward essentially what you asked for, which is to try to phase this in a different way. And so we are only focusing on these items in what we're calling Stage One and bringing forward much smaller numbers. I think in our original proposal, drinking water, we were requesting $21 million being on ballot, we have reduced that slightly. Most significantly, on the wastewater side, because of a shift in focus and really only looking at main plant's investments, that number has shrunk substantially down to $138 and stormwater remains the same at $14 million, but that brings the lake bond down from, I think it was 204, down to 152. How did we do this? You know, it, it wasn't exactly where staff wanted to land, but again, after hearing the feedback and after considering a couple of things, in particular, the East Plant consolidation. The East Plant can't be brought to Main Plant until Main Plant is rebuilt, and so that was scheduled out a little bit further. The, the other piece was North Plant, and I think we talked about this in our last meeting, you know, a violation at North Plant is still a violation. Any gallon of sewage entering our water bodies is a gallon too much, but from a risk management perspective, you know, North Plant's flows are smaller, it's not as influenced by storm events as Main Plant, and so, since the community seems to want to go this way, we have pulled that out of, of this particular proposal. It is extremely important, though, that people realize that these two projects have to happen and will happen, and that I will be returning, as I've outlined in the memo, as early as 2027, to potentially seek funding for the balance of this project. What I hope is going to happen is if we are successful with the grant funding that we believe we are eligible for, for Stage One, that perhaps the bond need that we're bringing to you is going to be less than this current estimated cost, but we do not know that yet. Because these projects, in particular these two, which we know have to happen in some way, shape or form, I've gone ahead and I've included those particular projects and their timing in the FY '26 to FY '35 rate projection, because I don't want anybody to think or be surprised when we come back and then they see the, the rates change. Additionally, because of the, the long-range sort of borrowing plan that we have, even though we're doing some borrowing later, some of our initial rate increases in these coming years look somewhat similar in that we have to start raising money now, otherwise we would have a huge spike later on. I've also taken the liberty of trying to identify some other costs that we know are coming, even when I don't know exactly what the costs are, at least making sure that we've documented those clearly for the community and for you all, so that when we come back to talk about something potentially as substantial as the comprehensive drinking water plant upgrade, we're not wondering, you know, what, where that was in this part of the story. So the good news with all of this is we have been able to bring down, the, the rate increases are still substantial, not going to lie, we're still going to be working hard on affordability with you all, but instead of a 113 or 107% rate increase, this current conservative model now looks at something that's more in the 89% increase. Again, very much hope that it's going to be conservative if we're able to pull down more SRF funding, that will make a big difference in, in this trajectory because that will be much lower interest rates. We're meeting with the state treasurer this week and hopefully going to be exploring some creative possibilities of how we might be able to achieve more state funding or even state financing, and it doesn't include the possible grant funding that I mentioned because we do not have that confirmed. A couple of other quick updates, in past presentations, we had mentioned a, pursuing a high-level third-party review of our preliminary engineering report, which was performed by Wright Pierce, and that, that third-party review has been completed by Hoyle Tanner. Again, it was very high-level, the scope of review was really just on big-picture assumptions, a high-level review of project costs and essentially confirmation that decisions were in line with industry standards. The suggestions that Hoyle Tanner provided were generally acceptable to both internal staff as well as our engineering consultants. I'm not going to go into the details of what those are, we're going to be publishing both the 60% PER as well as those documents and our response to them by early next week. The 90% preliminary engineering report should be completed by mid-February. Some other great updates is that we've done some initial vetting with Burlington Electric about this water resources to electric department renter utility payment assistance. This would be our method, should the council choose to pursue it, to assist renters, low-income renters... choose to pursue it, um, to assist renters, low-income renters, with what would be the likely impact of our rate increases on their rents. Uh, and then we've also prepared a number of additional outreach materials as part of our town meeting, uh, sorry, town hall meeting that we had last week. Um, and those are going to be available on the website, um, by tomorrow, which we hope that will be useful for you all to communicate with your constituents. Um, as I said, we are still committed to affordability and we very much look forward to working with the city council to develop additional affordability and assistance programs. As I've communicated to the TUC, I think a lot more work needs to be done on figuring out what the appropriate benchmark is, um, and then really deciding who and how we're going to help folks. Um, so that's not necessarily work that we'd be able to do right now. Um, but we anticipate, uh, in our draft of the resolution, we'll try to put at least some initial nod to, uh, the need for this work and would certainly welcome input if there's specific principles or guidelines that you want us to be adhering to as we move forward on this next, next, uh, phase. And with that, just the, the summary, we're happy to present that, uh, we have reduced, uh, the magnitude of the bonds that we're going for in 2025 and hope that that will, um, uh, allow you all to consider placing it on the ballot as well as for the voters to consider, um, you know, educating themselves and voting as they choose, uh, to, uh, give this, uh, potential authority. Um, and I think with that, I will take questions.
Thank you, Director Moyer. Uh, are there any questions or comments from members of the council noting that this will be back before the council at our meeting for our vote on January 27th? Uh, Counselor Newbeazer?
Um, just want to very briefly say thank you so much for, uh, your work, um, and, and for y'all's, uh, focus on affordability and commitment to that, uh, and respect for taxpayers. Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other counselors wish to get in the queue? All right, seeing none, we'll look forward to having you back, Megan, in a couple of weeks. And I would encourage counselors to reach out to you, uh, or to you, Director Spencer, with any questions in the interim.
And we're very much looking forward to seeing as many of you who can make it to, um, the tours that Rob Goulding, uh, sent out, uh, just so you can see up, up close and personal what the wastewater treatment plant condition is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Uh, Director Spencer, then could we turn to you on item 10.6. I will note that this, uh, comes to us now with the unanimous support of the Board of Finance, but, uh, would be happy to you, uh, kind of turn to you for a brief presentation on it.
Yes, uh, brief will be my presentation. Uh, in front of you is the opportunity to, uh, authorize financing for resolving a 24-year back-and-forth with Chittin Solid Waste District to allow the city to develop a unified soil management area at 201 Flynn and thus to free up area both in the interval as well as 339 Pine for other community uses. Uh, thanks to, uh, working with the CT Office and Brad Kuchenberger and, uh, Airport Director Longo, who I understand is still on this meeting here. Thank you, Nick, for still being here. Um, we have put together a financing package that is, uh, short, uh, appropriate, uh, interest rate that is consistent with FAA policy. Uh, so we are seeking your approval tonight on this financing package that will enable us to close on 201 Flynn Avenue and to do the necessary fit-up for our operations there. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chapin. Any questions or comments from members of the council? Counselor Shannon?
I understand, is it correct that, um, generally using airport money is not something that we do, um, nor transfer money between enterprise funds? And I believe that this requires approval from the FAA. Is that correct?
Director Longo, why don't I turn to you if it's friendly to President Travers?
Sure, thank you. And thank you for being here, Nick.
Uh, yeah, of course. Thank you, President Travers. Thank you, Counselor Shannon. And, yes, generally that is correct. We generally would not do this or use any airport revenue under the FAA's airport revenue policy for other than aviation uses. One of the allowable items under the FAA revenue use policy is to loan between, uh, departments, uh, as long as it's a short-term loan and as long as the interest rate is the prevailing interest rate, um, uh, so that it is a beneficial, uh, agreement, uh, to the airport. So, yes, generally, no, we would not do something like this unless there was a benefit to the airport, and in this case there is.
And this has also been reviewed by your attorneys as well?
By airport attorneys?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Counselor Shannon. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Bergman?
So if you could be just so kind as to walk through the repayment so that we don't get in any trouble with non-repayment of short-term, um, loans, like has happened in previous administrations?
Yes, uh, Counselor Bergman, uh, the loan would be repaid, uh, in three to four years. We have budgeted $40,000 in this fiscal year, and then, uh, we would be looking at allocations of $160,000 in the next three years, fiscal years. Uh, so, uh, we are looking at potential options for not needing that full amount, but in the full amount, it would be $40,000 this fiscal year and $160,000 in each of the next three years.
And so just to be clear, maybe this is for CAO Shad. Um, we know the, the tough budget times that we're about to, uh, go into, uh, but this will be part of the expenditures that we will absolutely have, um, in the, in the years coming if we can't find alternative, uh, revenues to pay it. Is it correct?
That is correct. It is also my understanding that, um, a large portion, if not all of this, will be paid back through the solid waste generation tax. So, um, that certainly makes it a far less, um, risky inter-fund loan from the general funds perspective. There is sort of a guaranteed, um, so to speak, um, revenue source.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bergman. Any other counselors wish to be recognized on this item? All right, seeing none, we will, we need a motion. Counselor Barlow?
Um, I should probably read this, so I will. I, uh, move to waive the reading and adopt the resolution regarding a $520,000 inter-fund loan from Patrick Leahy Burlington International Airport to finance the purchase and fed-up of 201 Flynn Avenue, subject to review and approval of the city attorney's office, and authorize an FY 25 budget amendment to utilize fund balance from Water Fund 460 in an amount not to exceed $140,000 and to use fund balance from storm water, Fund 245, in an amount not to exceed $94,000 for the purchase and fed-up of 201 Flynn Avenue, and authorize the mayor, chief administrative officer, and DPW director to take such further actions and to execute such further instruments approved as to form by the city attorney as may be necessary or convenient to effectuate the transactions contemplated hereby. How's that for 11, 11:41?
Okay, thank you, Counselor Barlow, seconded by Counselor Bergman. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Director Spencer.
It is really appreciated that you persevered on this one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Barlow?
Uh, yes, I move to, uh, postpone item 10.7 until our next meeting.
Counselor Barlow has moved to suspend, uh, postpone item 10.7 to our next meeting. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Counselor Broderick. Uh, we will go to a vote on that motion to postpone. Again, item 10.7 to our meeting on January 27th. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Um, so, that then brings us to the end of the deliberative agenda as suspended and, um, noting that we do still need to turn to the city council with mayor presiding, I will adjourn the regular city council meeting at 11:42 PM and call to order the city council with mayor presiding at 11:42 PM. And on this meeting, the first item on our agenda is a motion to adopt the agenda.
President Travers?
Yes?
I, over here. Me.
Mayor?
I believe this is my meeting to run.
It is your meeting.
Yeah, so stand down, my friend. Thank you.
No time now, yeah.
You were on a roll, but with respect.
You are the mayor presiding.
I am the mayor and I'm going to preside. Thank you. All right.
Please.
So it, I don't even know what time it is. 11:42 PM, I'm going to call to order the city council meeting with mayor presiding on, uh, January 13th at, as I said before, 11:42 PM. First item on our agenda is the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Travers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, uh, Counselor Bergman. Any discussion before we, before we take the vote? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously onto our consent agenda, item 2.1. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda and take the actions indicated.
Moved by Counselor Travers. Is there a second?
Second.
Sec, I don't know who said that, but seconded by Counselor Broderick. Any discussion on the motion before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously. Onto item, um, 3, 3.1. We have one position on the police commission with term expiring on June 30th, 2026. Um, as per our process for nominations, we have a process, I just want to remind folks, let me look at my post-it note here. I will ask for nominations from the floor, um, then we will see if any of the folks nominated are here to address the council, and then we will take our vote. And it will be done by roll. Reminder, you can abstain, vote no, but you can only do one affirmative vote. Everyone understand? Was that a yes?
No, I'm, I'm waiting to nominate.
Okay, great. I was just, I was like, do you understand? Yes, you understand, okay. So, uh, to the body, uh, are there any nominations for the police commission term expiring June 30th, 2026? Counselor Barlow?
I'd like to nominate Kevin Garrison Jr.
There's a nomination for Kevin Garrison Jr. Is, uh, so that he is nominated, is there, is Kevin either online or in person and would like to address the council?
Uh, Kevin is not here at this hour.
Thank you. And is there any discussion on this nomination by the council? Counselor Barlow?
Uh, yes, I just want to say I've known Kevin now for a few years. Um, he's, uh, an engaged and involved community member from a family of engaged and involved community members. Kevin cares deeply about Burlington. Um, he grew up here. He's a small business owner and he serves on the board of a local charitable foundation. And I'm really excited that he now wants to bring his energy to city government, and I think he'll be a great addition to the police commission. So I'm hoping my colleagues on the council will share my support for Kevin tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Barlow. Is there any further discussion on the nomination of Kevin Garrison Jr. to the police commission?
Point of information?
Yes, Counselor Newbeazer.
And you've already said it, so my apologies, but just to be sure, the first nominee to get seven votes would then be appointed to position?
Yes, in order to receive a nomination, um, a candidate would need to receive seven votes. Period. Any further discussion on the nomination? It still works even with the vacancy. Is that your question? No, okay. All right, seeing no other discussion, going once, going twice, we are, I'm going to, going to call the question. I asked, so just for clarification on the seven votes, I did ask the city attorney because I know there is a vacancy on the city council right now, and her determination is that seven votes are required for a nomi-
Uh, if a nominee gets the majority of votes, which tonight is seven, they are appointed. If they don't, then the nomination fails and the position remains open.
Because I'm allowed to vote just for the math for everyone's tired brains. Rend it together, all, okay. Any further discussion or questions on the process for that matter? Counselor Kane?
Yeah, can you just remind us, uh, there's no functional difference between a no and an abstain, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
We've been over this before. I'm not going to surmise what, why some people vote abstain and other people vote no, but you have technically three options. You can only vote affirmatively once in terms of a position. So if there's more than, if this particular candidate does not receive seven votes, we will go to see if there's any other nominations. You could, you could hold your vote on this one for an affirmative vote and wait for another nomination. But you can only vote once per seat in any affirmative. All right, any further discussions or questions? Counselor Carpenter? Would you mind putting your mic on, Counselor Carpenter?
This, if this does not pass and is, comes up again with another nominee or several other nominees, how does that relate to your first vote?
If this first nomination, um, fails, you are, actually, I don't know. City Attorney, Brown.
So you can only, you can only vote affirmatively once. So if you vote affirmatively for this candidate and it fails, you cannot vote, you've used your one affirmative vote.
For this?
For this position.
Okay.
That we're trying, that, for this police commission, open position.
And if we abstain this vote, what happens?
Then you still have an affirmative vote that you could use for a different nominee.
You get one yes vote, Counselor Carpenter.
Okay.
And you choose your candidate and you have to stick with the candidate. Okay.
And, and as a point of order, if we, um, don't, if nobody gets seven votes tonight, then it will be re-advertized and, uh, opened up again? Is that, uh, how we will do that?
Thank you, Counselor Bergman. If there are, if no nominee tonight receives the seven affirmative votes, the position remains open. The position remains open, and then we, um, I'm looking over here, but we repost and at the, uh, the next call of the, of this mayor-presiding city council meeting, we would be voting again, perhaps with more nominees or the same candidates, I'm not sure. But if there's no one prevails tonight, the position remains open.
Point of order?
Counselor Shannon?
Um, I don't think we repost unless we vote to repost, re-advertise.
So I was looking to this direction on the reposting part. The position would be open and-
What the rule says is if no candidate receives a majority, the nominations fail and the position is re-advertized.
Thank you, um, City Attorney Brown. This is so much fun, everyone. Any other discussions on the process before we go to the vote on the actual nominee we have on the floor?
I, I still need-
Counselor Carpenter?
Clarification. So we have one nominee. If they do not prevail, is the next action to repost and revote again or, and at that, after the reposting, we could vote for the, the nominee that's before us today?
Partially, yes. Uh, Counselor Carpenter, I would ask if there's any other nominations, if the current nominee on the floor was not successful tonight. However, if there's no other nominations and/or there's another nomination and that person also fails to receive seven votes, then we would have an open seat and we would, uh, repost and we would vote again at a further, a future date.
Okay, and at that future date, I could vote again for that nominee?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, friends, we have a nomination on the floor of Kevin Garrison Jr. And we're going to call the question, and we do so by roll. So can the clerk please call the roll? The nomination is for Kevin Garrison Jr.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Bergman?
Abstain.
Counselor Broderick?
Abstain.
Counselor Carpenter?
Yes.
Counselor Grant?
Abstain.
Counselor Kane?
No.
Counselor Litwin?
Yes.
Counselor Newbeazer?
Abstain.
Counselor Shannon?
Yes.
City Council President Travers?
Yes.
Laura, Counselor McKnight, I'm on the Zoom.
Oh, okay, great. Um, Counselor McKnight?
Yes.
Mayor Mulvaney-Stannick?
I abstain.
Six ayes, one nay, five abstentions.
With a, uh, oh, oh- With only six affirmative votes, the nomination of Kevin Garrison Jr. does not prevail, and we now go to the question again. Are there any further nominations for the position of police commissioner term expiring June 30, 2026? Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, the position remains open, and we will, per rule, whatever number that the city attorney just cited, we will repost the position and the, this body will reconvene at a future date. Seeing no other items on our agenda, I will...
Sorry, point of information, mayor, I do just want to note that I will be working with Lori to re-advertise the position as soon as possible, and we will take it up at the first possible meeting after it's being re-advertized.
Thank you, Counselor Travers. With that...
Not a mayor, I'm sorry. Point of inquiry?
Yes, Counselor Litwin?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I did not quite hear Attorney Brown when she cited the exact section of the charter. If she could repeat that for me, I would appreciate that. Thank you kindly.
I was citing council rule number eight.
Thank you.
Point of information?
Yes, Counselor Broderick?
Given that we are voting on this, again, this is a question for those who have already applied, now that the position is being re-advertized, if, if the, according to city clerk, there's two people who applied, will they have to reapply for the next, the next time we vote on this, or do those carry over?
Just as a point of information, I anticipate that we could reach out to the previous candidates to confirm whether or not they want their applications to still apply.
So we can reach out, or they can let directly the clerk, clerk's office know if they're interested in reapplying for this position.
Correct.
Thank you, Counselor Broderick. Okay, friends, I am seeing no further business on this agenda, and so I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 11:53 PM. Thank you and good night.